Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our budget workshop this morning. As we get started here, I'm going to change the agenda just a little bit. Since our city attorney is not here yet, we're going to pause on item B, which is executive session. So we're going to move to D1, Delta 1 first. And here he comes. Here he comes. We will start there.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Hope everybody's doing well this morning. Perfect. Councilman Jackson, can you see that, the screen?
I can, thank you.
Excellent. Before I get started on this, I have one quick item I'd like to handle real quick. Danielle, would you please stand? For those of you that don't know, this is our city attorney, Danielle Ricks. She's an amazing -- I'm sorry, city attorney.
That's why Pete's not here.
Mary Lynn's got me thinking about the attorney. This is our city engineer, Danielle Ricks. She's an amazing person, an amazing talent, and we're very lucky to have her. So if you get an opportunity to stop and speak to her, please do. You will not be disappointed, I assure you.
Thanks. You're welcome.
Thank you. Sorry for putting you in the spotlight. All right. So this morning, we're going to talk about the DART ILA. Does everybody -- most everybody here already knows. That's interesting sound. Does everybody here already knows? DART had moved forward to approve funds to disperse to cities back in 2022. And our dispersment, based on population and increase in sales tax revenue, is going to be $5.9 million. This is all distributed based on a percentage of the fiscal '21-'22 sales tax contributions or the population of the area city. Total available funds for the member cities of DART is $233,924,000. So we did get a chunk of money out of this. In January of '23, the city council approved a resolution to join the ILA, and the ILA was signed and executed in March of '23. Now, as part of this ILA, we, as a city, we have to present some projects to DART. These projects have to be approved for funding. We already have a list of projects that have been set aside. We have been in conversation with DART already. We do have a preliminary approval for most of the projects. Once we get approval, after the new budget year starts, we will start the submission process to them for these projects. Once the projects have been deemed eligible and approved, these projects will go on DART's list of reimbursable projects. As we send these contracts out for design and then let them for construction, we will start the reimbursement process, which is for every expense that we send out and pay, we send that reimbursement request over to DART, and they reimburse the actual cost. We have to have these submissions to DART by January 31st of '24. Contracts for eligible projects must be awarded by February 28th to '25. Those are pretty tight time constraints when you're talking about projects of the size that we're looking to accomplish. And all funds must be requested by April 30th of '26. Now, this slide here, I'm going to bounce a little bit around a little bit because we do have multiple projects that are going to tie into additional projects. The first on this list is the Denton Drive Pike Street to Valley View project. This actually ties into the Pike Street Denton Drive Infrastructure Project that is already in design, prepared to go to construction. And it will continue that process over to or down to Valley View, which will include the roadway reconstruction and utilities. Then we're going to make a right turn on Valley View. And as you see, we have RTC funding down here on number four. That covers Valley View Drive from Denton to Nestle. Because it's RTC, it's all surface transportation related, so everything above ground. Since we do have the DART ILA money, we're proposing that we replace all of the utilities beneath Valley View from Denton Drive all the way to Tom Field. By doing that, it will allow us to use the DART funding also to continue this roadway reconstruction of Valley View from Nestle to Tom Field. So we'll have two limits, two phases to that project. And then we can also carry the trail further down towards Hoya. And then we have the Denton Drive Reconstruction, Star Center to Pike, which right now is part of the Pike Street Bond Project. And additional to that, we're going to propose Denton Drive to the southern city limits, which will include utilities and roadway reconstruction down there, too. So huge projects, massive projects, huge undertaking, and the timeline is going to be very, very tight. And that pretty much sums up the ILA. I am ready for questions, though.
Do you have the map, Brian, on the next slide besides the questions?
I do. There it is. We did make this map up last week trying to identify multiple -- as you can see, there's multiple funding sources here. You have the RTC funding for the trail that comes down Denton Drive, DART ILA funding for the southern city limit portion, the Pike Street Bond from Star up to Pike and then over to the Service Road, RTC funding for the roadway reconstruction on Valley View up to Nestle. DART ILA will overlap that with utilities and then continue on to Dennis with the roadway reconstruction and then pushing the trail on up towards Hoya and extending utilities all the way to Tom Field. And as I said, we do have preliminary information from DART that says these projects should be approved.
Yes, sir.
Is there a plan to widen or do any street modification to Denton Drive from the end of the red to the southern border in terms of widening the street further or beautification project?
So from Denton Drive south, the one thing we're going to look at primarily is going to be that curvature in the road right there at the grove. We're going to see what kind of right-of-way we have there to see if we can possibly straighten that out. And then we're going to tie back into the trail. Depending on what the trail does and how it falls out, how we're able to tie that back in, that's going to determine the constraints of the roadway redesign or reconstruction. I don't know that we're widening the roadway. It's not going to be possible with the trail. It's definitely not going to be possible if we try to pull that curvature out. It'll probably shrink through there. And in order to -- by doing that, hopefully, it slows some of the traffic coming through that grove area as well because Denton Drive is a racetrack.
Why are you taking the curve out?
The curve tends to pose a problem. It's -- we actually, we've had a couple accidents along that curve. One recently where a tree actually was hit by a car and resulted in some fatalities. But people come down from Dallas from Denton Drive, and they do travel at a high rate of speed on that roadway. And the curve has been identified as an issue right there. So we're going to try and pull that curve out. We're going to address some drainage issues in that area, too. The drainage is a big part of this project, all of it.
When you say drainage, you know, we've got two creeks that run right there.
Yes.
Is water coming up over that or whatever?
No, sir. It's the piping that we have in the ground right now. We're trying to capture all the water we possibly can. So we're having to increase some of the sizes of pipes so that we can force the water off of Denton Drive quicker and evacuate the water from Valley View as well. We also have a 60-inch line that runs down along Dart Rail. And when I was looking at those plans through this process, I noticed that DART actually has a 42 that ties into that 60 along with everything that we have from Valley View and Mustang Station area that ties into it. So in this proposal, we're looking, as you can see this yellow line along Dart Rail right here, we're looking to add a parallel 60-inch line to tie their 42 into and offer some relief to Valley View and the drainage coming off of B Street and Goodland.
So would all that be covered?
Every bit of it.
So we're not having to look at a bond or re --
We're looking to fund all of this through DART and the other funding sources that we have available.
Okay.
Yes. Nothing additional.
Very good. Anybody have any other questions?
So does that mean that all the projects on the board that you had back on the ongoing and proposed total that $5.9 million? Or is it --
The $5.9 is only the projects in yellow. The orange is a RTC project. Shane, do you know how much that one is?
$2.9.
Was it $2.9 also?
$6.9, I think.
And then we have $2.9 million available for the blue shaded area, and we have $3.4 million available for the red area. And those are all from alternative funding sources.
Thank you for the clarification, man. And I just wanted to be clear that what we're showing up here is far above the $5.9 related to the --
Yes, those are, these are multiple projects, multiple sources.
Understood.
And it all ties together. Richard has a question. Mr. Jackson, yes, sir.
Hey, Ryan, good morning.
Morning.
This may be more of a question for Ben, but the contract allows Farmers Branch to request up to 40% of the dispersment once we direct the contractors to start work. Are we planning to submit for that? Or are we waiting until we've incurred all of the expenses to get reimbursement?
I'm going to redirect that one to Tammy and see what our plans were for it if we do.
Plans are to get the money upfront.
There we go.
We're going to apply for all the funds we possibly can upfront.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Councilman Barrett? Good. All righty.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you. Next up is item D2, discuss and review the city's financial status, revenues, expenditures, projects, balances, financial trends, capital projects, personnel and staffing, fixed assets, and other issues related to the fiscal year '23-'24 budget.
Mayor, council, Tammy Zerman, Director of Finance. So this budget workshop, when I was putting together the presentation, I was trying to come up with a theme for our fiscal year '23-'24 budget and was referencing some other cities and what they used as far as themes. Some of them were nautical, especially during COVID, steady the ship, continue the course. There was one that seemed to relate to the Twilight movie, Breaking Dawn. But being finance, I'm not as creative with my terminology. And I could have gone to our Director of Marketing, Jeff Brady, and I'm sure he would have come up with some great themes. I did approach our city manager, Ben Williamson, and he's forever the optimist. And I believe he said kicking butt. I'm going to keep it PG. And what I'm going to do is leave it up to our city council as to set the tone and the vision for our upcoming budget. And so with this budget workshop, for some, it's going to be their first time with the City of Farmers Branch in going through this process, and that includes me. For others, it's your second, your third, maybe fifth or longer. But I will kind of go and do a basic Budget 101 to kind of reemphasize what we do. It is a huge tool, and that's why I've provided a copy of last year's budget book that's in front of you, which I'll be referencing some of the tabs in it with the pages and that we're going to use this book often in referencing what we do for the city and how we're going to steam ahead. That's a bad one. But when we put together our budget, we're basing it on a bunch of assumptions. It's our financial trends, it's our best educated guess. We look at statistics, demographics. We have to stay within the regulations from our local and state governments. There's inflationary factors, a lot of analysis. So as we go through this budget workshop, I'm going to reference my notes because it's a little bit of a seminar or lecture today, but it's interactive. So I want there to be a lot of questions. I'll try to answer most of them. But we're going to get very comfortable with this budget book as we go through the next three months. So when we were first putting together the budget workshop, I had kind of an outline in which this is how my presentation is kind of going to flow. And I'm going to be referring to this agenda. And I've also provided, in addition to the budget book, there's a financial analysis that's from one of our consultants that goes into our sales tax revenue. One thing that I received late last night that can kind of be tied into a theme when we're doing this budget process is, I believe Ben provided this slide to kind of showcase the variable demands that we're having to go through. We are financial stewards of our budget. I would say, since we're a city in the park, we're also kind of a big city budget in that we provide very good services for our city with a low city budget amount. But you're going to get a lot of citizens' input on what they want. And it's going to be the council members' goals to try and meet those with the limited resources that we have. When you're putting together your own personal budget, you're having to -- I remember when my kids were smaller, you know, the toy allocation budget wasn't big enough. I had to kind of balance out my operating, my taxes, the food, the mortgage, and still provide somewhat of the high standards that my kids wanted. And that's what we're kind of doing with the city in a much bigger fashion. So let me get back. And Councilman Jackson, can you see these slides?
Yes, I can. Thank you, James.
Okay. So in your budget book, I'm going to have you do page 36, which is a green tab. First green tab. And that actually, which the rest of you can't see, but in the budget book, it goes over our strategic planning ideal timeline. And when we met in February, we started our strategic planning session, and we affirmed the city's mission. We went through the critical business outcomes with our strategy map. And that is used by the departments in putting together the budget for fiscal year '23-'24. Now, our budget process is year-round. October 1st is the beginning of our fiscal year. We're putting in our newly adopted budget, and we're closing out the fiscal year end. Then we have October through February where we're going through our audit and we're putting together our annual comprehensive financial report, also known as our Act4. We have February, the strategy meeting. March is the presentation of our audit results. And then we're starting to put together our salary projections for this budget. April and May, we're reviewing the financial results for a mid-year revision. And we start with the departments on their budget request. June, we are meeting with a budget committee, and we're continuously preparing the budget draft. July, we have some important dates that are on this presentation. Today, the 11th, we're having our retreat. On the 25th, we get from DECAT, Dallas County Appraisers District, our certified tax rules. And that, until we get those numbers, it's a lot of educated guessing. And then on the 31st, the city manager will submit to, submit the proposed budget to the council members. And July, we are reviewing these budgets. We're having a lot of meetings and public hearings on our proposed tax rates and on the adopted budget and a revised budget for the current budget that we're in. So from that February strategy meeting, we came up with our critical business outcomes. And it meets with our vision to be the model for the city of the future with safe and beautiful parks that interconnect thriving neighborhoods supported by a vibrant and diverse economy. So the council established the vision and the goals, and the adept is that the departments utilize and set as guidelines for their budget request. Now, the last year's critical business outcomes, or CBOs, can be found in your budget book on page 10, which is your orange tab. And so you can kind of compare what we have established for this upcoming budget with last year's critical business outcomes. Okay. So I also want to reference in your budget book, page 46. Again, this is the best tool that I can, or textbook, if you want, to have you get comfortable with as we go along in this budget process. So on page, let's see, 46. I might not have tabbed that one, or at least not on mine.
It's the red.
It's red. It's red, okay. That's your funds overview. And that gives a definition of all the various funds. We're governmental accounting. We have several funds which contain, which we have different accounting regulations that we have to follow and report on. So fund accounting is unique to municipal governments. And so I want to talk about these fund relationships. So you have the definitions on page 46. But if you go over to page 50, the yellow tab, you can see the exact same slide that's up here right now. So each fund is unique. Your general fund, that houses the majority of the operations of the city. You've got your general government, your public works, your public safety, and your parks and rec, or culture and recreation. You have other funds such as your debt service, your economic development, your special revenue, and your fixed asset funds that have a specific purpose. Now, your enterprise funds, which is in your far, or your bottom left corner, is also been called proprietary funds. And that's more of a business-related accounting structure. So that is your water, sewer, and stormwater funds. There's several regulations on not intermixing some of these funds together in the activities, keeping them separate. We have internal service funds, which is your fleet and facilities. It's your workers' compensation fund and your health claims fund. And we have your hotel motel fund, which is, we have a separate tax for that, and that funds our historical park and our tourism. So our budget book is divided in tabs between these different funds. So it's a good resource. You've got the definitions of each of these funds, and we're going to go over each of these tabs as we're going through the budget process and to see what the activity and the requests are. So in putting together this agenda or the topics we want to talk about, we just kind of did our Budget 101. And part of Budget 101 is I also want to explain fund transfers. It's unique to, again, with our fund accounting. So with fund transfers, I'm going to reference in our budget book, page 51, which is, just kind of flip it over from where you're looking right now with a fund accounting slide. If you'll notice, it's the summary of our revenues and expenditures. And you'll see we've got our total revenues, but it'll say down below there, transfers from other funds. Or below the expenditures, we have transfers to other funds. So what are fund transfers? Again, they're unique. It's got a specific accounting requirement that has to be shown in our annual comprehensive financial report, separated out. But then there's a government-wide financial statement in our Act4 that eliminates those entries, and they kind of disappear. But we have these budget transfers. And what they do is they shuffle off resources that maybe have been received in one fund, and they put them into another fund. So good examples are, we've gotten some revenue that was deposited into the general fund, but it pertains to the debt service fund. Or we have, we have services that are provided to our proprietary fund, our water and sewer for human resources or fleet and facilities, and it's transferring it back to pay for those services. So it's recognized as an other funding source. And there's typically four common types of transfers. The reimbursements, the loans. We had the event center that was a loan from the general fund to our hotel motel fund. And then there's a residual equity transfer where, for instance, we have a consolidated bond fund that we're using up and we're hoping to zero out. But if we don't have it completely to zero, we will transfer that residual amount to the general fund. And then there's the operating transfers that I already mentioned. Oops. Did you have that cleaned up? I just spilled my water. Okay. So that's kind of your Budget 101. And we're going to get into our philosophy. So fund accounting, we have what's called fund balance. And let's go to our budget book. And we're going to go to page 211. And that is a blue tab. You'll see on the title of this page, it's the summary of estimated revenues, expenditures, and fund balances. And we've got it divided into columns where we've got our major fund sources, our major operating funds of the city. So it quickly compares our revenues, expenditures, and fund balances for the budget year with the prior year. And so we have special expenditures that we can use for one-time uses of our fund balance. We've also established our bottom number, our -- our bottom number, our estimated fund balance, will try and do a projection to see where that falls. And what that is, the very bottom number, is our unassigned general fund balance in the very first column, which is in your budget book, it's a little bit bigger. So we have a policy that has a 15% low target rate or a 20% high target rate for our general fund, unassigned fund balance. So unassigned, meaning there's no restrictions on it, right? It's not assigned for a specific purpose, or fixed asset purchases, or there's some other transfers or related restrictions, donor restrictions, that we need to keep it set aside for. So the unassigned balance is typically for your catastrophe-related expenditures. It's a depletion when we have a catastrophic event. But it's also a key holder of what we achieved with our AAA bond rating last June. So what you can kind of think of it in terms of your personal budget, it's your cash savings. So some people in their personal budget, they want to have a set aside of three months or six months of expenditures in case they're laid off from their, from their job or something emergency-wise happens. In the past, we've had a, a policy of a 90-day fund balance. We have a 15% to 20% policy. But in practice, we would like to get closer to that 90-day holding of our general fund assigned balance. And in keeping the high reserves, it keeps our AAA bond rating. So for fiscal year 2324, we're hoping to get close to a 90-day fund balance. So important thing in keeping long-term sustainable fiscal health for the city is that we have a adequate operating budget, that we have flexibility in our budget, that we're investing for the future, and that we have adequate reserves. One thing we did create at mid-year, city council approved a revenue stabilization fund. And I don't have anything in the budget book to reference this because this is new. And when most government financial organizations recommend a reserve account, we're utilizing it as a risk management tool. So the Government Financial Officers Association, or the GFOA, recommends a strong reserve policy because it meets all the different demands that are put on our city. It plays a role in reducing volatility. For instance, we have set aside money at mid-year with a revenue stabilization fund for the potential loss of a large retailer and their sales tax revenue. It also provides a softer landing in case of recessionary pressures. And we have a comptroller ruling that is still kind of in play. We'll see what happens next year in the legislative session. But it would impact our sales tax revenue. So it provides also a buffer for a crisis, if there was any civil unrest, a cyber attack, or in previous two, three years, a pandemic. Will also provide financing for capital assets, maybe an asset replacement, or an economic development incentive. And it's, as the title says, it's a stabilization fund. It helps our unassigned general fund, fund balance, get close and stay at that 90 days. Now, what you're going to have from citizens, taxpayers especially, they're going to maybe look at our fund balance and say, why is it so high? They're suspicious of government. They're going to say, I don't want to pay as much in taxes. You need to get that back to me. Or why aren't you using it to repair my street? So this is kind of a tool to explain what we're doing financially conservative, being a tool to manage all of the various risks that the city may have. So, thank you. I also have, under our philosophy, I'm going to talk about our tax rate. Because in producing our budget for this coming fiscal year, we have to talk about the property tax rate. And what we're proposing is the largest reduction in 40 years. It's a two-cent reduction to the proposed tax rate, which would take us down to .569 out of $100 in assessed property tax value. We already have a homestead exemption of 20%, which is the largest you can have. And last year, we provided an increase to our senior and disabled exemptions of $100,000. In comparison to other cities, it is a significant savings for our seniors. And we have one of the lower tax rates. We will talk about terminology of what makes up our abvalorem or property tax rate. You'll hear a lot of M and O and INS. M and O being your maintenance and operation portion of the tax rate. If you think of it in terms of your own personal budget, it is your general operations. It is the food, it is the entertainment. And then you have your INS, interest and sinking, which is your debt portion of the tax rate. And that is, in terms of your own personal budget, your mortgage or your car loan. So we have, one thing I want to mention is that residents often get a little confused when they get their tax bill and thinking all of the tax dollars is going to the city. And we only make up a quarter of the property tax dollar that they are spending. We have over, well, close to half going to the school district. So I wanted to show this slide. And when you're having those conversations with the citizens that make up a small percentage, a quarter of their actual tax bill. When you're also having these conversations, I thought this was a helpful slide in showing the, we're a smaller city, but we provide a lot of services. You get the best bang for your buck. For a typical mobile phone bill of $128 a month, you get, for less than that, $124, you get 24-hour police protection, 24-hour fire protection, 24-hour ambulance. We have street maintenance, we have lighting maintenance, library services, parks, trails, ballfields, animal control, refuse services, public health, building inspections, code enforcement, everything that keeps the city running smoothly. And for our senior residents, this is an even lower monthly tax bill, $77. And I'll mention that that 77 calculation is with the two-cent proposed tax rate deduction. So the senior resident amount is lower because we have that large $100,000 senior exemption. And that is just the slide that shows how we calculated, came up with the calculation. Okay, so we've talked about our philosophy and our proposed tax rate going forward in this budget cycle. So let's talk some more about revenues. And we're going to dig into property taxes. And I'm going to just kind of give a brief overview of one of the huge regulations with our property taxes, and that Senate Bill 2, also referred to as SB 2. And what that did, it was, the property tax reduction bill of, I believe, 2019 went into effect on 1/1 of 2020. And it effectively lowers our voter approval rate from 8% growth to 3.5% growth. And what it did is it provided new tax calculations, which are very complex, and a bunch of new terminology. And as we go through this budget process, we'll kind of go through what this terminology means. Your voter approval tax rate without unused increment. So you've got some new terminology. And we'll abbreviate it because that's what we like to do. No new revenue, NNR. Voter approval tax rate, VATR. We're going to have unused increment that came about with Senate Bill 2, or UI. And then we'll also have a new form that was provided with SB 2. And so our tax, our taxation and truth form, or TNT. And I'm going to refer to our budget book. If we'll turn to page 271. And that is the green tab in the back. You can kind of see our tax rate calculation worksheet. And it's about nine pages. And until we get our certified tax values on July 25th, we can kind of guess at this. But we're going to start plugging in our numbers July 25th. Now, we won't get our real, true rates from Dallas County until August 4th, and we'll start having public hearings. And part of those public hearings is you'll have to approve the maximum tax rate, proposed tax rate. You'll have to vote on that maximum. Doesn't mean that we're going to actually adopt that tax rate. But you will have to vote on the maximum that we will, that we're able to do. So in this truth and taxation calculation, I can answer a bunch of questions of the different definitions of what all of these new calculations mean, what it, you know, the gyrations that we go through in order to determine the actual property tax rate that you can go out and talk to the citizens about. It's complicated. That's all I'm going to say about it, it's complicated. But I do want you to know that when they were putting together SB 2, it was a way to kind of tap down on the increasing assessed values of property holders. So when we go through the gyrations or the calculations of our property tax, we have to go through this process where we get those certified values, which I already mentioned. We publish the notices on those tax rates. The council votes on that maximum. Again, it's, we're voting on the maximum. It doesn't mean we're going to actually adopt that tax rate. And then come September, we're going to hold a bunch of public hearings on our budget, our tax rate, our fees. And then hopefully, they get adopted and approved. October 1st, those bills are sent out to the citizens. We have kind of a seesaw effect with the appraised property values. You may have gotten your bill and it maybe went up 50,000 this year in your appraised property value. That doesn't equate with the huge increase in taxes that we get because we're pushed down with our no new revenue. So if you have a larger base, you have a smaller rate to get the same amount of revenue as last year. And vice versa. If the appraised values go down, then your no new revenue, no new revenue rate can go up. What is also included in our calculations is our TIF, our tax increment financing, which has to be taken into consideration, and our debt payments. How do you calculate the property tax revenue? This is kind of a simplified formula. And you can, I'll do it from home. You can take your tax bill and you pull up the farmer's branch assessed value. And you're going to subtract out your exemptions. That's your homestead or your senior. And that gets your taxable value for your city property. We're going to take that, divide it by 100, divide it by $100 of your assessed valuation, and you multiply our rate. We're proposing the rate of .569. And that's going to be the total revenue that you're, or in your personal case, it's going to be the amount that you owe on your tax bill. So property tax, largest portion of the general fund's budget. We also have sales tax revenue. This is the most elastic, volatile piece of our revenue projections. And we utilize the services of an outside consultant and going back over decades of data to help with estimations for the future. What I wanted to, and I've included the packet of his analysis in its, that green page right there. Yeah, that's it. And what, he's went into a great amount of detail. It's our, I recommend if, take it home, look it over. It's a, if you're into data or financial analysis, it may be fun for you. Otherwise, the key takeaway from it, I think, is the third page. And that's what's up on the screen. Is farmer's branch has been in a very upward trend. That has blown our projections kind of past what we had hoped for. And we've been 13th in the, in the state of Texas on a per capita basis for our sales tax collections. It means we have a strong commercial base of sales tax revenue. And you can kind of see that this trend, and it may be that everyone's kind of maybe maxed out on their credit cards or the inflation has gotten to it. Because inflation is kind of included in that as well. We're starting to see that downward trend. So over time, you're going to have that up, you're going to have that U curve and that inverted U curve. And so we're now kind of seeing that trend downwards. And what the sales tax expert, Lewis McClain, did a projection on is the median. He came up with a median of 4.33%. And that's that blue line that you'll see on the screen. So that median line helps us prepare for the ups and downs. So what that helped us in our projections for this budget is if we're projecting, and what we're, we are projecting is 26 million in sales tax revenue, where is the safe line where we start banking the excess in times where it's going to dip below? We're going to have that downward trend. And so we've come up with what we think, and his analysis has provided, is around a $22 or $23 million. And where it's a steady, where we think that's going to be steady, and we need to bank anything over that. And we'll put that in our revenue stabilization fund. And that we can use, the city council can vote on what we would like to do with maybe one-time projects or maybe it supplants some of our operating expenditures that are large. What it won't do is affect our AAA bond rating. Another large part of revenue projections has been our grant funds. So, and I've added, when I sent out the presentation slides, I had, later became aware of another grant as Ryan had suggested in his slides, from RTC. of another grant, as Ryan had suggested in his slides, from RTC, something traffic-related. I can't remember exactly what that stands for, but that was 2.9. So I've added that into the slide. And so, as you can see, we have a lot of grant money that has provided a lot of CIP, capital improvement projects, that has built the city to a great extent, so that we didn't have to go out for debt. A large portion of that being ARPA, our American Rescue Plan Act, which provided over 11 million dollars in projects for majority of them parks, or our jail, senior centers. So it's a various amount of grants for trails, for sustainability, for disasters. We have winter storms, we have stormwater improvements, our firefighters with the safer. So we have a grant coordinator that, we're still looking to fill that position and get us organized and planning effectively and getting as much as we can with grant funding. It helps supplant our budget. And that can also be found in your budget book. It's a yellow tab, page 158. It's under the tab of special revenue funds. You're going to see a bunch of special revenue funds. It can be donor funds, it can be police forfeitures, but one of our largest special revenue funds is our grant fund. And on this page, you'll see all the various different types of local and federal grants that we've received and that we're proposing to receive. So when we're reaching the end of the year, we're looking to see, we did our mid-year adjustment, and that gave us six months to kind of figure out where, you know, with our best guess, where were we assured, where were we over, and adjust it there. We're also going to do that at year-end with a revised budget adjustment. And so, in trying to project our revised budget, we have some interest income that has far exceeded even the mid-year projections, and possibly some sales tax as well. As I showed on that one slide, we were on a very good trend upwards. So what we'll do with that, and what we're proposing to do with that, is utilize it for advanced funding of some large CIP, capital improvement projects, where we're putting 1.3 million into the Justice Center, or there's the Valwood median enhancements. So what that advanced funding will do is it helps keep us in that target fund balance range, where we're good financial stewards of the money. And then it helps us with our projections and next year's budget. We're not having to put as much into our CIP project budgets, so we can utilize our, kind of our limited financial resources for the main operations of the budget. And it will also allow the two cent property tax reduction while increasing our public safety personnel cost. And then lastly, I wanted to, and on the future direction, and provide a debt service scenario. We are a pay-as-you-go city. That is what we have been. We have a very low debt amount that is outstanding. So in managing our debt, we have some debt that we'll be rolling off, that will decrease our INS rate of our property tax. And so what I want to make sure is that a lot of school districts will do this. They'll come out and say, hey, we've identified a project or a capital improvement that we want to do, but it will not increase your property taxes. It's because of this debt roll-off. So we've had someone kind of put together an analysis of what that would look like if we were to keep the property tax rate the same with the decreasing debt requirements that we have for principal and interest. And we've estimated 13.1 million in debt issuance, and that's utilizing the maturity of 15 years that's in line with our current debt maturities, and it's based on an interest rate for AAA bond rated cities. And that is to have future discussions with the city council and what they want to utilize. And going forward, you would need to have possibly a bond election in May or November. So as we're putting together this budget, I want to provide those different scenarios for you, and that opens it up to questions on that rather lengthy presentation. And I didn't do enough hand gestures.
Thank you, Tammy. I, I want to say I thought this was really well put together, and this is, without a doubt, probably the most important thing that council members will work on. This is the biggest responsibility that council members have. And so, first of all, I would encourage you to spend a lot of time looking through this and in your one-on-ones with Ben, ask lots of questions, meet with Tammy. This is a huge animal, and there's so many intricacies that I will say us as laypeople don't know. Okay? I'd like to go back and just touch on one thing regarding debt service in the, right there. You know, one question that does come up is, okay, if you have debt rolling off, then why don't you lower our tax rate? The school district just did a $750 million bond election. They had to go through the process, but they said it's not going to raise your taxes. Well, that's not really true. It didn't change the tax rate, and that's really important to note. There's a difference, and I, I think, I take this very seriously, I hope others do too, when we're talking about tax rate versus taxes, okay? 750 million dollar issuance that wasn't going to affect the tax rate.
Correct.
Okay? It did raise my taxes because my appraised value went up. So there is a misnomer that some people were promoting that, oh, it's not going to raise your taxes. The other, I, I think one of the other sort of philosophies that's born out of this is, okay, we have debt maturing. Let's just for round numbers say it's two cents. Okay? So we paid off bonds, and that expense is ending. Should we not lower the tax rate by two cents? Okay? That's a question, and we have to be prepared to answer that. And, and we need to have very valid reasons for keeping that money, because those are questions that we get asked. So I think that's important. And I, I just, again, use that as an example. But as you were giving the presentation and going over the timeline, I thought this, this plays into why I believe it would be important for the charter review committee to look at maybe moving our elections from May to November. Because we have a brand-new councilman who was just elected a month ago, or put in office a month ago, and now he's having to deal with this. And November, the budget would already be done, and you have time to learn and research and, and get acclimated to the whole budget process. Whereas right now, for some, this is an immediate thing. And many oftentimes don't know what they don't know, don't know the questions to ask, and are possibly voting on something that they don't understand. So you breaking this down today in very, what I will say, simple terms, because it's much easier for me to understand, was huge. And in reading through this, I thought it was very well put together. It's important to understand the relationship of the various funds and how they play into Because I've often said in, in conversations with city manager, Charles, what have you, well, why can't we take money from X and move it to Y and then repay?
Correct.
Now, sometimes you can't do that. And so that, it's important to note that. So I, I want to make sure that we're encouraging everybody to ask a lot of questions. There are no bad questions, and nobody's going to think anything of asking questions. And so I'm going to open it up, go around the room, and see just what's on everybody's mind at this point. We're going to have more meetings, that's for sure.
Yep.
So, Councilman Roman?
I don't have anything. I think it was a well-put-together presentation, and I appreciate your thoroughness and use of very late terms to help us understand a concept that might be new for any of us.
I do want to take just a second to acknowledge it wasn't me. Again, I have great staff, and I have a great city manager's office, and all the departments that have put together the budget. It's a, as I mentioned, a year-round process, and I, I want to thank our budget manager, Suzanne Pritchard, who painstakingly puts together all of the pieces of information so that we can present to you in lay terms.
But I don't have any questions, but I will once the budget comes out.
Hopefully, yeah.
That's what I'm awaiting as well.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tammy. Great presentation. I echo the mayor's comments, very well put together, and much, very simple to follow. I want to go to the last slide that was talking about the debt rolling off. So I think that's, that's really an area of focus, particularly for many residences. As a city, we've gotten used to the pay-as-you-go concept, maintaining low debt, having our AAA rating, bond rating, and, you know, just going through the CFPISD bond election. And again, as, as the mayor mentioned, there are a lot of different ideas about the impact of that, that debt. So I just want to be clear that I understand, and those watching understand, what this means. Let's say this 13 million dollars of debt, as you said, represents two cents. When it rolls off, we have the option of lowering our tax rate a couple of cents so that we offset the expense that we used to have associated with, with this debt, or we could not change the tax rate at all, continue to receive our same tax revenues, use that money in general account for whatever purpose. Or we could reissue the debt, which would have a neutral impact on our debt rating, have a neutral impact on our tax rate, and allow us access to funds to use on projects or to spend on infrastructure. For example, one that's constantly on my mind is public safety. You know, we just bought a $2 million fire truck a few months ago that wasn't in the budget for this year, or not all of it was in the budget for this year. We may be able to use debt for sewer and drainage and those kinds of things. Is that, is that an accurate understanding of what this slide is, is telling us?
Correct. It gives you some options as far as, well, you'll need to go through bond council to come up with what specifically is going to be on the ballot language, and you'll have to spell out what that purpose is going to be. But as far as general fund-related debt, that's what this is mainly for. For our water and sewer debt, we do not have any debt currently for our water and sewer.
But we could use this reissuance of debt for water and sewer if we needed to.
It, it's usually property tax-supported principal and interest, so your, your water and sewer is typically for your, it's paid with your service charges.
Okay. All right.
It, it doesn't mean that it can't be rolled into that. It's just typically it's for non-water, water and sewer, non-proprietary related funds.
Okay. Okay, very good. That helps. Thank you. I thought I had one other question. If we could go back to the, what slide, 18, the sales and use tax slide? There we go. So our sales and use tax as a percentage is, we're 13th in Texas on per capita collections. That, that strikes me as really strong. Am I reading that right?
Correct. Yes. When you compare us to our surrounding cities, they have already seen way before us that downward trend. In one particular city, they're actually seeing a negative trend. So we've stayed up high for a long amount of time.
Okay. So I have to imagine, just, and just out of curiosity, my, my thinking goes, well, how do we compare to other cities? I just remember 13, but I have to think, you know, a city like Addison would be much higher than what we are. So am I, am I thinking about that properly?
Well, it's based on per capita, again, but in that sales tax analysis, the, the, I forget how many pages it is, but you'll see the comparison to the other cities as well, in there.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Councilman Barrett?
On this general fund revenues slide, can you more, I don't fully understand the second bullet point there, or the voter approval rate.
So the voter approval rate is, it's your, it's your last year's taxes with adjustments for TIF, et cetera. And then you're putting on there, so it's your no new revenue rate plus any growth in your assessed property values. It used to be up to 8 percent, and with Senate Bill two, it was lowered to three and a half percent growth.
Okay. And so those numbers are on, on your home. I'm not understanding, is that, are you talking about houses? Are you talking about tax rates? What are the numbers, 8 percent and three and a half percent?
So growth and total, so you'll have, let's say your, your appraised value went up 10 percent. We don't get that windfall of 10 percent increase in our revenue. It's capped down to a three and a half percent growth, if that makes more sense.
Yes, okay. Very, very good. That was the only thing, well, that was the main thing I didn't understand. Thanks.
Okay.
Go ahead, Tammy.
Thank you for the presentation. I'll go prior accolades. I think it's very well done. In 22 slides, you put together 12 months of activity and understanding what elements are part of the budget. I want to go back to my favorite slide. It's the graphic of the fund balances. It really does show, in my opinion, the overall, a very good, one more slide back to the graphic. The graphic I love, yes. There it is. I think this is a really good slide where you can put 300 pages of a budget and address probably 80 to 90% of it here on this one slide where it identifies the budget allotments for those particular fund and what comprises those particular funds. I think this is, for me, going back to jumping in, being elected in, you know, May and challenged to understand the budget in the July, August timeframe, this became the most important slide. It directs you to elements in the larger document that you can dig into. So I do think that there's an opportunity for all of us, including our residents and others that are interested in how our budget is assembled, to utilize this one page. I'm, I'm big on graphics. Picture tells a thousand words. This in one page distills, like I said, almost 300 pages of the document. I want to again, give you accolades for putting a very succinct approach to the budget cycle and the elements and the content. Like I said, in 22 slides, you distilled it down very well. And I look forward to the new numbers coming out of ECAT and how we will play and how we will define and determine our philosophies about how we'll address budgets going forward. We know costs are going up, service demands are high, and therefore there's a trade off once you, you know, lower the amount of funds that you take in. And we are being capped, as you've already said, with SB 2 and the impacts that are there. But we still have high demand for services and they, they cost money. The staff, the equipment, and Richard talked about, you know, a fire truck over $2 million. And we won't get that fire truck, as we all know, for three more years. And so there's an opportunity for us to position ourselves while we are, as, as my grandmother used to say, we're flush with funds at the moment. And we need to prepare for a strategy when we have a rainy day and perhaps a rainy season. And therefore, we need to make sure we position ourselves for that longer philosophical 90-day. I think that's the right approach. It gets out of the, you know, 15 to 20%. You could be anywhere. And we could argue we're at 15 or we could argue we're at 20. But if you're targeting 90 days, that's a single target. That's much more achievable and we can all hopefully, you know, rally around such a strategy going forward. But I look forward to the discussions and there'll be a lot of number crunching and I look forward to it. So thank you.
Thank you. Very good comments. Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions for Tammy at this time? We will not be seeing less of her.
That's true. Very true. All right, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, but do we want to do that front section? Do you want to talk about that here?
That's a lot of correction. That may take a little bit longer.
Okay, all right.
Then he's got another meeting he's respectful of.
Okay. Staff won't have to come back this last night.
Which one?
Since our city attorney is here at this time, I want to go back to item B, go into executive session. Staff can use this time to get a little work done, return phone calls. So the city council will convene into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551. That 074, personnel deliberation, evaluation of the city manager, and terms of employment at 10:15.
Do them a couple minutes to clear.
Yeah, we'll take a couple minutes to allow folks to move. Welcome back, everybody, at 12:27. Thank you. We do have action out of executive session. And I am going to make a motion. Motion to authorize the mayor to negotiate and execute an amendment to the city manager's employment agreement to increase the annual car allowance to $9,600, increase base salary to $255,000, contribute $22,500 not to exceed the maximum amount allowed by law to a deferred compensation 457B plan with a three-year cliff vesting for each annual contribution. Increase vacation sale back to 14 days of accrued vacation or leave each fiscal year and/or 14 days of accrued sick leave for each fiscal year.
Right. 14 days of either or.
One or the other. Increase the contract term by one year. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
David.
Where's David?
Oh, restroom.
We will.
Want to hold that till he comes back?
We will wait. I will eat.
It's a very responsible lunch.
This is spicy.
You want a pickleball?
Thank you.
You guys been changed, right?
Absolutely.
We get to change as well.
And we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, I don't know.
I don't know.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
You going to say anything about him?
Yeah, I was going to get that.
So again, just to reiterate, because we already had this conversation with Ben, but we believe Ben is doing a fantastic job here with the city. I know he's worked really, really hard to build a team with each of you and especially some of our newer folks that have come. We really appreciate it. The culture that is permeating the atmosphere of Farmer's Branch is so new and refreshing and we couldn't be more excited. All of us believe our city is in a really, really good place. And so thank you for obviously working here. Thank you for helping to make our city so good. And thank you for helping to attract and retain the good people that are working in each of your departments. So we appreciate it. I'll let the council speak also.
I would agree. I think the mayor said it, Ben, we're, we're in a good place. The change has been disruptive since Charles left and, you know, a number of different circumstances, you know, befell the city, if you will. But we've been able to come out of that and move forward. And I think we're in a good place. We're preparing ourselves for, you know, opportunities that come up in the future and as well, looking at some of those dark clouds that we know are out there as well and putting out, you know, the, the right planning and the right positioning through staff, as the mayor has said. So we're very happy. I'm very happy and so look forward to working with you.
I echo, very happy you're going to be here for a while and happy for the, the decision we've made. And I'm very impressed, just knowing you a couple of months now, very impressed with your work and your knowledge.
Richard?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Ben, congratulations. I look forward to working with you for the next couple of years again. And I really just want for residents to understand the process that this council just went through to come to this decision. It was very data-driven process. No doubt, very well deserved, but the data that this council went through was very detailed, comparative with a dozen other cities and, you know, arrived at a decision that not only was comparative to the cities around us, but undeniably supported by the performance, by your performance, Ben. So, you know, this market adjustment is, is, you know, not only well deserved, but absolutely and according to the data's warranty.
I'll echo what they have said. It was very, very data-driven and it gives you much more room for growth as well. So we look forward to the years of the growth with you and you growing this wonderful team. Thank you, guys. Thank you, all of you.
Ben, you've surprised a, a lot of us. I think we, we took, we took a big risk because you were a bit of, you kind of, you were the guy behind the curtain. Nobody really knew much about you unless they had much one-on-one interaction with you. And councils, most of their interaction is with the deputy city manager and the city manager themselves. And so you've surprised us along the way and we took a big risk. We, we of course are doing this market adjustment because we, we, we were taking a risk and we were sort of rolling the dice a little bit with great confidence that you would, you would do well and you have. And so I think it was necessary for us to do a market adjustment to be able to correct that, that salary and make sure that you were in line with what the average salary is in the regional area. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All righty, well, thank you again. Really, we appreciate it. And we appreciate everything that all the rest of you are doing too. So don't everybody line up for a raise right now. Okay. Do we go back? Continue with D. Okay, so we're going to pick back up with item D2, Delta 2. And I will turn over to the city manager.
Richard, making sure you can still see the screen.
I can't, yes, thank you.
All right, Mayor, Council, Ben Williamson, City Manager. We will make this quick. It's still philosophical, but I'm making sure I'm getting clear direction for what the staff is doing as we prepare the budget for you all. What I'm going to be asking for in this presentation is direction on room rental fees, trash fees, and then if we can, get to a number on Metro Crest Services. That would be very beneficial. I'm also looking to affirm discussions we've already had, such as the rec center fees, raises for staff, dependent care, neighborhood programs, and the water rate. So I started this budget season with one slide. You know, I think Tammy said kick butt. I still agree with that. I want a 5-0 approval on the budget because I want to build a budget that every single one of you all can agree upon is the budget for Farmer's Branch. I don't want anybody to have anything left out. That does take some compromise, but I have a feeling we can get there working together. So that remains the goal. So the first one is, we talked about this a couple of months ago, the raises in the market for the positions. And so these are actually going to be the new full-time positions. Sorry, I jumped ahead on my raises. These are the positions that staff have asked for, that have made it into my budget that I will be giving to you all for consideration. These were based on business cases from each department. Each department is represented in this room. If you have further questions, we can also do those through memos. I can send you the business cases they asked for, why they asked for these positions. We feel like this is the best alignment for adding positions to the city. I don't like adding positions because there will be economic downturns. I don't want to have to lay off employees. It is very difficult to get a position added to a budget that I'm going to recommend to my city council. But these are the positions based on our growth and where we're going that I feel are most important for the city to continue to deliver the service level that's been expected of the city. As you'll notice, it's very public safety heavy. So of the positions that are being added, you see three in fire and two in the police department. So those help us move those departments in the right direction towards their strategic alignment and goals. Again, business cases for everything. IT is a never-ending challenge. It is what it is. It's cybersecurity. We're relying on more and more software. We need more and more help there. This is just getting us there. And this doesn't represent everything they asked for. They asked for more than the one position, but the one position I felt was what they needed this time around without trying to just say, hey, we need to fill everything we need right now. It's what do we absolutely need for this next budget cycle? And then the recreation supervisors at the rec center, getting them back to the balance they had before, also in alignment with the volume they're doing, which y'all have heard about. That place is packed. It is busy. Animal services, they're going to offset a little bit of that cost in their budget, not with the position. They were using contract services, special services. They had other funding in there for outside services to help out. They really need more of a permanent presence to be in the animal shelter to do what they need to do. As our population grows, there's clear data that shows the number of animals in the city also grows, so that's the alignment there as well. And of course, the event center coming online, it's going to need the two assistants in addition to the position that was already added at the mid-year as that was coming online, as we're starting to develop that. Then of course, the reclassifications. So succession is a big thing of what we do here. So when you see a deputy director there, that is saying we're getting somebody ready as a successor for a director. We're preparing them so that way, many years from now, hope they don't lose any directors in this role, but it have deputies in line that we're training to take that institutional knowledge and continue the journey with the city on this culture that we're building today. So it's having the right people and the right alignments for the future of Farmer's Branch. After all of us are gone, in all fairness, it's for that future Farmer's Branch. Getting the right classifications of positions, here you stay at the health desk manager, and then of course, the pay increase for the crossing guards. Those are the positions you will see in the budget and the total budgetary impact for these new positions coming in. This is why I don't take it lightly. That's a lot of money. $841,000 is a lot of money. But these are the positions and this was not, I think this is about half the positions that were requested. You had a lot of departments that were told no. And I don't like having to tell my team no, but I don't like having, if I can use contract services or other creative service delivery models, I will. It's much easier to cut a contract than it is to say, hey, I appreciate you, you or you, but we don't have enough room in the budget and we can't keep you on as a staff member. So that's the philosophy we have. We don't take adding positions lightly at all. And there's the pay. This is the slide that was presented by Yoko. It was a great slide, talked about where we are in the market and making sure we're in alignment with the market movements. What we have is police and fire, those officers that are on step plans, getting a 6% market adjustment, and then 3%, which is half of that for the other, rest of city staff. So those that are not on a step plan and those that work at city hall and the other facilities. Again, a large budgetary impact. We don't take it lightly. It is data-driven, but these are the numbers that are being baked into the budget for consideration from council. Oh, it's got animation on it. This is going to be the dependent care count that we talked about. Richard, moving a little bit. So you see the cost there as well. We updated the numbers so you could see how we did this. 135 participants at $1,000 a year. Again, showing how the numbers are coming together for what will be included in the budget as far as new costs, new expenditures, things that we have to be able to explain to the public, why is this in here? So this explains why these are in here and how we came up with the calculations for those numbers as well. This is one we've lightly talked about, fees for trash service. And this is one that's moved around quite a bit. And there's a couple of discussion points on here as well, is where do we start? Where do we finish? What is the goal of this? Currently, we use the general fund to pay for all trash service for everybody in the city of Farmer's Branch, residential, not commercial, not businesses. Our residents have free trash service. It is something that's unsustainable through the future, so I'm trying to align that with a timeframe to when potential revenue sources like the landfill don't generate revenue. So when truly becomes a pass-through cost to the residents, what does that look like? And so that's beginning to start a fee and then build it up towards the final amount in 22, 23 years that aligns to the market cost for trash service. It's hard to forecast what that'll be as soon as landfills start closing. Once camelots close, there's not much close by, so it's going to be more and more expensive as time goes on. So one of the things I was asked to consider with these ones is, could we do a certain rate, a lower amount, and increase it over 22 years? Could we offer the seniors a discount? Maybe not 20%, maybe 50% was something that was postulated. And I think that's a great place to start. But in addition to that, I was going to say, do 25% discount for residents on the west side. And here is the reason. The west. on the west side. And here is the reason. The west side residents get trash service once a week. The rest of the city gets it twice a week. Now, they still get the bulk. They still get the brush. They still get the recycling services that everybody else gets, but the frequency is different. So, it is a different service level. So, it was understanding that the charge would be different for those that are experiencing a different service level. And so, for my district representatives on the west side, this is a little bit different way of looking at it as far as how you would explain that cost and why is it different from the rest of the city. And so, what I'm looking for on this one, council, is if we can develop a fee structure that starts low and gradually increases over 22 years to get us to where we're trying to be, which is market rate for trash service, offer a discount for our seniors, make it match the west side's service level. Now, in 22 years, 23 years, they're going to have to have a tough conversation about that service level. Twice a week is more expensive than once a week. And so, that's one we'll have to figure out at a future time. But for today, through the foreseeable future, that is one that we're going to be looking for. Do we have this conversation and get this ready to discuss in this year's budget? Do you need more information? Are you comfortable with how it's been set up so far? And then, I'll leave it to you all if you would like to discuss now or wait till the end and review all the slides all at once, depending on where you have questions. What would y'all like to do?
You want to, you want to continue to go through and then we'll just walk?
Okay.
Walk back.
Consolidated neighborhood programs. This is one, is I had multiple requests from council members for different programs that impact neighborhoods. So, instead of having a line item for each line, so 75,000 home repairs, 75,000 senior home repair, the neighborhood improvement program, the share-o program, the homelessness cleanup, the residential facade program, was to park a certain amount of money. So, each program on their own would have been over $700,000 if I had to put them all together as individual line items. My recommendation is to use the stabilization alignment that we've been presented with to where the funds stay there, even if they're not used, and we can always fill it back up if needed. But it feeds all of these programs. And one of those would be the Oak Brook request that has come through. And you're saying, why $90,000? That is half the speculative amount for the water meter replacement that they're asking for. So, it would be a cost share with them. It fits the neighborhood partnership program model we already have in place, but it creates a mechanism to allow that conversation to continue. So, instead of having multiple line items for each of these, it also allows the budget to flow where the need is. So, we have a major storm or wind event and residents need help, we can have more money available and maybe we just didn't have as many facade applications. So, it allows us to be more flexible with how those funds are utilized. And if we don't use them, it doesn't go back into the general fund and have to be rerequested back out for the next year. It allows us to keep that stability instead of seeing the budget swing back and forth because the funds are being stabilized based on the type of account. Fee changes. This is one where we always like to go through, what are the fee changes that are impacting us and which ones aren't? Sometimes, we don't have control over fees and that's going to be with the state. They're going to sometimes change the legislation and there's things we can't do. Food trucks is a great example. It's a low impact to the budget, right? So, now the county is going to be in charge of doing our food truck inspections for the health department. Development, construction inspection, they changed the fee structure. We do on that. So, we're going to have to add a new fee structure in through Public Works that offsets the cost of providing the service instead of based on a percentage of valuation. So, that is one we need a little bit more of flexibility to change because the state changed our playbook for us. So, the legislative session is having impacts on us. Rental fees. So, low impact, but as our spaces become more popular, it's the cost to offset the true cost of using those spaces and the staff time that's required for those. We've already talked about the rec center and trash service. I do have my teams from those departments here. Should you have more questions on those fees, they can explain them much more eloquently than I can. The event center fees will be on the next agenda. And then, we've talked to you one-on-one about, I am working on a mechanism to work on credit card fees, the processing fees, that several hundred thousand dollars per year that I would like to recapture because it's effectively reducing our fees because we're paying credit card fees. So, our revenue goes down because we don't have that in place. And that's coming on a future agenda. We're still working through it. Again, showing the rec center fees. This is a slide you'd seen before. It was in a handout. I just clarified which ones were annual versus monthly so you could see how those fees lined up. Again, this tells a little bit more about those fees and how they're structured. I know there's a couple of questions on this one from council that we'll be answering a little bit. And then, the changes in the room rental fees. Our room rentals have always staggered. So, they're not going to always be the same fees for residents versus non-residents. Our residents get a favorable rate. Non-residents pay a little bit more. And it shows that escalation of fees based on the data for those rooms and what it takes to maintain those as well. This is what I talked about, Public Works, the new fees they will be bringing online and how they are going to put those fees together. You see the original fee on the right. It talks about how it was a percentage of it. That's how we used to get the fee. So, it could be some big revenue there. Instead, we're having to look at more of, what does it cost to do that actual inspection? And then, how much revenue do we need to offset the cost of that inspection? So, that's a balancing fee. It's you pay for what you get. Firehouse Theater will be here on August 1st to present. But in full transparency, this is, this is an organization that had multiple line items and multiple budgets. I'm moving all of their, all of their expenses to one budget within the city's budget and non-departmental so council can more clearly see what those are. But you see from the list there, since 2015, we've paid over $1.5 million and help with the Firehouse Theater. That is how much it's cost the city to help the Firehouse Theater. You can see everything on that list of services that we provide. That is done by contract. That is in the facility's use agreement. So, that is where that comes from. And again, from 2015 is the original agreement. I believe it's been modified at least once where it took away the $1 ticket fee that we used to get and return that revenue to them. So, that is the alignment with those. And then, there was an annual sponsorship of $35,000 in economic development without seeing any type of direction agreement, formal agreement between that organization and the city. I have removed that from my budget because I don't have a contract showing why that money moves. So, it's been pulled from Allison's budget. She's always saying, hey, I need more money. I'm like, well, what are you spending money on? And so, that's to give transparency on the Firehouse Theater. Again, they will be here on August 1st to present to you all. They do have a list of questions that you all have presented that we hope they will be able to answer. Contract for services. This is the other one I'm looking for direction on. As we're moving forward with the budget, I believe this will be our fifth time talking about contracts for service. I put check marks next to the ones that I believe council all nodded on the last time we had this discussion. The one that is still a question is Metro Crest Services. These are on your next agenda, one week from today as consent items. I'm holding the Metro Crest Services contract for approval. So, once I get direction from you all on that amount, that's when I'll move those forward and you'll see those on the next agenda for looking for council action. As is, $370,000 is the budgetary impact. Future budget topic. So, again, Firehouse Theater is coming to present to you all. You do get the budget on July 31st. I don't believe you're going to have time to read it in one night. And we're going around for accounting on August 1st. So, that's why I asked originally, I was a little bit too optimistic on an August 9th town hall. I need it to be at a date and time that you all are comfortable saying, as a council, that you have given staff direction to build the budget that you can now go with us arm-in-arm to the public to say, this is a budget we believe in. So, that's important as well. And then, departmental presentations. I didn't plan on parading the departments in front of you this year and saying, hey, this department's asking for this. This department's asking for that. Instead, I'm going to try and focus on the movement within the budget, similar to what we did with our one-on-ones with Tammy and her team to discuss how the budget's behaving. What is the change from last year? What are those movements? And do you have questions? And is there an advantage to bringing any of these departments before the city to talk more about any of the changes in their budget? So, there's definitely some obvious ones. I believe fire, police, and public works. Public works also means the capital improvement program, by the way. So, it's not just Public Works, what's Ryan doing. I'm also looking at his CIP accounts because that's one, we've been told the sky is falling, right? We need $400 million. Well, you probably want to know how we're trying to address that. Sky is falling. What could happen? And that's part of what we're doing with the revenue stabilization funds. We're making sure we have the flexibility and the budget when something happens to be able to take care of everything. And that is quickly getting through, looking at the time there to make sure we're there. One thing I did want to say is breaking news as of yesterday, the state of Texas, the legislature did have their special call sessions continuously going. They did seem to agree in form to a school property tax rate reduction of 10.7 cents. That is budget relief. I'll just be honest with you. That's a lot of money when you look at the tax rates and how the budget's divided. That is a lot of money that is moving. And they also talked about increasing the home state exemption from 40 to 100 or 20 to 100,000. It's going to $100,000, but they're anticipating tax relief in the amount of $1,000 to $2,000 for almost every homeowner. That's a lot of tax relief. It's breaking news as of yesterday. I don't have all the impacts done, but that's going to need to be a part of our conversation because that is a big change in the budget and how people are going to experience their tax bills. So, if you look at it, 10.7 cents from the state, 2 cents from the city, if we were able to maintain as we predict, that's, that's a big tax rate reduction in one year. So, looking forward to seeing that. I don't know how the state maintains that reduction for two years. You can do it when you have a big surplus, but year two, you have to hope all the stars align, the surpluses reestablish themselves, or the state's budget's in a much different spot. Differently, at my, oops, I have approached it differently with us, which is my recommendation has always been, when you have a surplus, invest it in one-time expenditures you need for the organization, not recurring, such as changing the tax rate. Changing the tax rate is something that ripples through for multiple years. So, I do not make those recommendations for the city's budget. But those are my budget topics, to be followed by Squire Park by Mike and then Boards and Commissions. So, that's where we're at. On this one, any questions on anything you've seen? I am going to look for affirmation on a couple of things.
I've got a couple of questions regarding the dependent care program.
Okay.
So, this is a use it or lose it program?
Yoko, would that be correct? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And so, our premium, this $138,000 that this is going to cost, that's a sunk cost for us.
Yeah. So, and this is an estimation. So, I just wanted to make it very clear. That 135, we put that number in there just by looking at kind of who is on our plans, looking at those things. So, I don't have, that 135 is not an exact. It's a science just to try to get an estimation. So, if we do an employer match, we're doing it at a max, not a max, but if we do it at 1,000, some, some individuals might not put that much in. So, it just depends. The max we are going to match is at $1,000. The only thing that's not recurring would be that one-time setup fee of $950. But yes.
All right. And so, having this program, is this going to make us more competitive in the marketplace? Is it going to help us?
Yeah, I would say so, sir. By just adding a dependent care FSA, that will kind of allow us to compete because the majority of cities have this. That's, that's an option that employers provide. Where we're going to be different is we have a match. That is not very common across the board. Like, if you look at our comparable cities and we say, how many people have this DC FSA? Majority of our comparable cities have it. We are adding it, adding this match of $1,000, which is not comparable in the city, which means gives us an advantage to say, if you come and work for our city, this is an option for you to.
But you're assuming that 135, in this example, 135 employees are going to participate?
That's our assumption based on looking at, we, what we did is we looked at who is on our plan, our workforce in general. And we looked at employees that have children within that below 13 years old because that's the majority of people who would go ahead and take advantage of a DS, a DC FSA because you are able to have that tax-free kind of set aside money. You could have adult dependent care, but that has a little more restriction. So, if I'm, let's say my parents, I wanted to have an FSA account for an adult dependent care. One of the restrictions is my parents would have to live with me for a certain amount of time throughout the year. It couldn't be, I put them in a nursing home and then I utilize that fund. So, that tends to be more limited because most individuals don't have their dependent adult living with them.
Okay.
But if you have a child with special needs who is over 35 and are unable to care for themselves, that's also an option for our employees to utilize.
Okay. So, our budget impact could be less than this, depending on the number of people that decide to participate, correct?
Exactly. Absolutely. Depending on the number of people and depending on how much they are willing to put into their dependent care.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Moving to trash service, obviously, $5 a month, $60 a year for, I'll say, regular residents, the majority of our residents. And that would be reduced for seniors and for those on the west side.
Yes, it would be one or the other, not both, though. So, if you're a senior on the west side, it wouldn't be 75% as an example. And as Yoko was hinting at, we're still pre-revenues. We don't have our certified tax rolls. These are our best guesses, but they're really good guesses for some of these as well. We would have to go look at every single residential household, look at how many there are. There'd be some work to be done, but these project pretty closely is, we could do an escalating fee, get us to market in 23 years, 22 years, be prepared for the eventuality of needing to close the landfill, but also be prepared to pay for trash and recycling service in the future, which is out there. It's looming.
Okay. I'm, I'm just going through my questions, then we'll just go around. Okay. On the neighborhood programs, you've got in here, one of the items that would be paid for are the homelessness cleanup.
Yes.
It's hard to say. So, when we have issues in our city like we did on Denton Drive and we're having to call out a team to come and address that, that would pay for that?
Correct. We currently use a similar fund in non-departmental that pays for this. Shane has a group that comes out every other week and sweeps the city, but if we see any hotspots. But as we have these talks with the other cities and solutions begin to present themselves, we're going to need money from it. And this is where I'd go to get it as well, to pay for, if we find solutions on 635. Because we're trying to also not just homelessness and Farmers Branch, from the regional perspective, when we see hotspots on our border, such as under 635, how can we work collaboratively with Dallas, Carrollton, Addison, Capel, and have a unified front? I believe we all have very similar goals.
Well, that was, my question was, with the ILA that we're going to sign with Dallas, I would expect that that's going to increase our expense somewhat. So, you feel like you've got adequate funds built in?
I believe we're on the right track. I'm always comfortable coming back to council and say, we're achieving your direction. I need more money. And so, I'm very comfortable coming back to you all saying, hey, we've been amazingly successful. We need a little bit more money in here. But what I don't want to do is put too much money in there and have money just sitting. It's not being put to use. And so, I'm definitely comfortable coming back to you all. And we'll have to analyze how we spent this first year when we had a lot of cleanups. But I believe we're on the right track. I don't have concerns at this time with the amount of money. We're budgeting at 400,000.
Okay. All right. Then, going to the rec center fees, one of the things I noticed, we're increasing our fees anywhere from, say, 60% to almost 200%, 300%. And I just question for some of our residents, if that is a, is that a realistic increase in fees? Because for some of them, it's substantial. We're going $22 to $40.
Absolutely. Let me defer to Rachel on that one.
Well, there's, there's residents and non-residents. There's an individual non-residence, whatnot. I don't mind increasing for non-residents, but, but our $30 to $48. I mean, I, I realize people are getting a value. So, I just want to make sure that we're really, truly justified in asking or increasing those fees.
Absolutely. Rachel, would you like to take this one?
So, majority of fees are only 50 to 60% increase. I'm not sure of the 300% increase that you're talking about. But with these fees, what we also have to look at is, we haven't increased any fees since the building's inception. So, since 2004. And then, the consumer price index has increased 2% to 4% every year since that timeframe. So, when we were going through to looking, when we were going through and evaluating our prices, we also went through comprehensive analysis for all of the similar, excuse me, similar buildings, facilities. Not only were we looking at municipal gyms and centers, we're also now looking at the pregnancies who have to compete with as well. So, these prices are bringing them closer to market rate. Honestly, our resident rates aren't quite at market rate. Bringing them closer to you and then increasing our non-resident rates to, closer to that market rate. What this is doing is also combating our increases in expenses. So, we've had an incredible amount of new non-residents and residents coming in to use our facility, almost doubling our membership increase, almost doubling our membership from last year to this year. And that's with still two and a half months left to go in our fiscal year. So, with that, we're also increasing all of our consumables, our gym lives, our cleaning distances, anything like that. So, part of this is also compensating for those increases as well. So, at this point, they're getting a premier facility at a heavily discounted rate.
Okay. All right. I just need that information so we can sell that to the public. All right. And then, moving to room rental fees, do, have we had, or are we experiencing sufficient demand that justifies increasing our rates to residents? And are rooms, like at the rec center, being rented primarily by residents or by non-residents?
I will defer to my expert one more time. Rachel, you're up one more time.
So, yes, rental rooms are hard to come by. And each year, our numbers have increased. Each year, our numbers have increased from 2021, increased 100% in rental revenue, 102% '22, and we're already at almost 60% of revenue from last year, and we still have two and a half months left. So at this point, the weekends are super popular in what people are wanting and getting these rates to. We've also done a comprehensive analysis on other cities and other rental spaces, what we're able to offer. We've also gone through the renovation, so we're looking at a higher-end room than what was offered before.
Are the rental rates going to cost us any business from our residents if we increase the residential rate?
No, and at this point, there may be a slight decline, but generally speaking, it's mostly our residents versus non-residents interested. We want to serve our residents, not serve our non-residents.
Okay. All right. Then, Ben, on the public work fees, you had reestablished the base rate for water?
Yes.
Explain that.
That's reestablishing the base rate that was taken away last year as part of a, not tax cut, but tax rate reduction. So it's reestablishing the original water base rate to $21.99, which is the water base rate from FY '21, removed and then reduced, and now bringing it back to its original rate. That pays for the infrastructure we talked about earlier and the needs we have.
So I'm trying to recall from my bill. That's not something I'm seeing right now, is that correct?
You're seeing a lower version of that, yeah. It's about.
Which is?
$10.
$10. And is that, does that base rate include X amount of water with it? Or is that a fee just to have water service?
It's the first 2,000 gallons, isn't it?
Yes, first 2,000.
First 2,000 gallons.
It's tiered instruction, based on your consumption.
Okay. Then you had mentioned Firehouse Theater. And I correct when I read this? We're paying, I'm assuming, all the expenses associated with operating that building?
That's what it appears.
Including, like, the electricity, the gas, and the water?
Yes, we are paying for those as well.
Okay. And we were spending $35,000 annual sponsorship on top of all that?
Correct. Utilities are $12,600 per year. Telecom is $3,000 per year. Preventative maintenance is $17,865, which you're seeing a lot of in that list.
Okay. So what do they pay for?
That's going to be a great question to discuss on August 1st. I can't speak for them on that one.
I'll save the question. Okay. And then as we went into contract for services with Metrocrest and whatnot, I have some comments there, but I don't want to belabor this anymore, so I will let the rest of the room go. Councilman Roman?
Okay. Let's start from slide number three, please, which is the budget, the full-time positions.
Okay.
So for the three firefighters, where are they going to be stationed? Is it one for each different station, or are they all going to be for one or mixture?
I think, would you help me with that one, Shannon?
They're going to be added to our fire trucks. So initially, it would be at our section one. So truck 131 would get the three additional firefighters, one per shift, because we had to do an A, B, and C shift, is what that's for.
Okay. Let's see. And then for the media specialist, I saw that one, and for some reason, I thought that's exactly what Officer Rutherford does.
I'll let Kevin jump in on this one. Chief McCoy, if you'd help us explain the difference between this position and Steve Rutherford's position and what you hope to accomplish.
So this is part of what Steve Rutherford does and part of what the Fire Department has been using Wendy Kempton for, is adjuncts to their current job. And so what, this is police budget, but Daniel and I worked on this together for police and fire departments. Perspective to have a public safety media person that can focus on putting our message out there, answering questions that come in online, enhancing our presence in the market. Right now, we don't have much of an impact when we need to get a message out about a missing person or an event that's coming up, or if we need the information to answer some public concerns that come up. We have to rely on employees that have other jobs, and Steve's job is the one that keeps him very busy throughout the course of the day, throughout the course of the week, if he wants classes and goes and sees and talks. And so a lot of times, we don't lead major calls and getting information out to the public and responding to questions. So this person would basically become the marketing person and public face of both the police department and the fire department as they answer those questions for the public.
It just seems like, and maybe I'm speaking from experience, I worked for a small farm and we had a lot of, we had to wear a lot of hats. Then they hired somebody to do one thing out of the five things that I was doing, and they paid them way more for that job. So then I was a little bit niffed at that. And so I'm just trying to understand if this media specialist is going to be doing something other than just media, or if maybe there's an opportunity to have them maybe somehow split the responsibilities 50/50 between Rutherford and this position, or do something where there's maybe a little bit more relief. I mean, I've had conversations with him about some initiatives that I'm wanting to move forward with, and it seems like it's just the time that he's allowed in the day is just not enough. And so.
There are some aspects of Steve's job that this position would assist with in conducting some of the meetings and programs and safety presentations and some of the things that we do in the public, the coffee with the cop event. This would kind of pass to that person to manage.
Okay.
So I've had some experience with this role previously. I've been involved in creating this position in a previous organization. And a lot of those public-facing things that public safety does, police and fire, the open house that the Fire Department did, or ongoing events that we do inside of our organization, this person takes over the coordination role for doing that, prepping them, putting the information out to the public. So the officers that we have in our organizations that are tasked with other things, Steve is ours, can have more time to do the things that we need Steve to do. There's a lot more projects I would really like to plug him into, but for the same reasons, he doesn't have the time and the schedule we currently have.
Okay. And then this, so what I'm understanding is this is going to be a dual role that's also going to serve, I guess, for all of public safety, not just for police?
Correct.
It's just going to fall under your department?
Yes, we're housing them, but it'll work for both departments.
Okay. I don't have any other questions for that. Thank you. So if we can maybe go to, I don't have any questions on that one, or the dependent care. I'm supportive of those two. For the fees for trash service, so let me make sure I understand this. Residents on the West Side are receiving once a week trash pickup?
Correct. And they're required, they're required to have a bin, a trash cart?
And everyone else in the other part of town is receiving that service twice a week?
Correct. And they can use a cart where they don't have to.
Okay. And are there any additional services that, or any other differentiating services that one is receiving that the other is not?
Not that I can think of in this element, no.
So I'm just maybe being overly simplistic, but it seems like one part of town is receiving 50% of the service that the other part is receiving?
I would take it to 75, because that still includes the Citizen Collection Center, the Brush and Bulk Service, those other pieces to it. The trash collection is one element. The frequency is the difference, but the other elements that are still part of the package of trash and garbage are still there. And so it's not, I started that way, and then Shane corrected me on my math and goes, it's more of like a one-third or one-quarter differential, because the difference in the fee structure, if it was to be twice a week versus once a week, is not double. So there's a little bit of a change in that one as well. So there's, it's not a true two-to-one difference, double versus half, when you put the whole package together.
So why didn't we do twice-a-week pickup for the West Side?
They were, the side was, Shane, they were starting to see the public health. So because we had the time to plan that out and design appropriately, their alleys are wide enough to handle garbage collection throughout there, so bins work well over there. Parts of Farmer's Branch, if the city ever has to make the choice to go to, if it gets abandoned, it's once a week. There's going to be parts of the town that's going to be pretty challenging, just because of the space, you know, every entry garage, which alley's too small for trash truck, and I ain't have to wheel it out to the front. Some folks are willing to do that. There's going to be some real challenges for elderly folks to make that happen. So that's why you have this kind of mix-and-match approach on the, on the 435. If you're able to do that, you can. But the West Side, we've designed a neighborhood, we made sure alleys are wide enough to handle garbage truck going through the entirety of it. So you could have the bins out back.
Yeah, but it sounds like if you're able to, because it's more well-designed, it enhances the efficiency, because, right? So it seems like there'd be more of a reason to be able to more easily be able to do twice a week. Maybe it's a different conversation, but we'll put a pin on that, but I certainly want to revisit that on Thursday.
Of course.
So I'll skip that one. And I do have some comments and questions about the Firehouse Theater, but you said they're coming in August, so I'll reserve that for them.
August 1st, they've confirmed they're coming.
Might be more appropriate for them. And other than that, I don't have any other questions at the time, at this moment.
Okay. So on the budget impact for, I guess it's that, the positions, can you explain what the reclassification is for some of, for those three positions?
Explain the reclassification. Which part?
It's the last box, and it says, "Position Reclassification for 2024."
Okay. When you say, "explain it," are you looking at why the reclassification?
Yes.
So for example, the deputy director would be succession planning. It's having the right person that's ready to ascend into that role, such as, for example, sometimes I have deputy directors sitting without a director. We're waiting to move that person up until they're ready to be successful in that new and current role. So this individual, I believe, has been in this role for a decent amount of time and is ready to move up. It's not just about more pay, it's more responsibility and preparing to take ownership of the department. So these aren't just about more pay. Well, the crossing guard's a little bit different. That appears to be a different one. But when you look at the deputy director ones and the help desk manager, that's realigning to what we need and the positions we need in the organization.
Okay.
So succession planning is what it is. But more responsibility, it's not just more pay for.
Well, and because that, the bottom one is, so I've wanted to understand the other two as well.
Correct.
Okay, let's see. So you've answered my long list of questions in my email, and I appreciate that. I do. So I'm with Councilman Roman over here on the fees for the trash on the West Side. So just explain, if we're doing, per Shane's explanation for the West Side, 25%, how are we coming to 50% possibly for the seniors?
And so that was, so as I meet with all of you all and talk about the different things I'm potentially bringing forward to council to consider, y'all give me different things to look at. First, can I do a different rate for seniors? The answer is yes. What you wouldn't want to do is change an established fee, because when it's a new fee that's coming on the books, it's one thing to balance it as council sees appropriate. If it's an existing fee, it doesn't reduce the cost, so that means the group that's not getting the discount will then be subsidizing the other group. In this case, there was a business case, and it was an interesting discussion, that seniors most likely aren't generating as much trash as others. They tend to, you know, sometimes we have homestead exemptions, senior exemptions. We have exemptions for our seniors to consider that in some situations, there's a fixed income component to it. And so it's really trying to balance the scales of, hey, we have a new fee that's being discussed that will affect our seniors, but what is their true use? Now, it doesn't change the fact that the garbage truck still has to go to the house, stop, extend its claw, or if they're picking it up by hand, provide the service level. But at the same time, it's recognizing those different situations for each household. And sort of like the West Side, I'm saying, council, if we were to do this, it would be great to consider the West Side currently has a different service level for frequency. They still have all these other services, but their frequency is different, so it warrants a different rate. And so what I'm asking for in this one is saying, if we want to consider a fee, are you comfortable with a discounted rate for the West Side, since they have a lower frequency? And then for seniors, are you comfortable with an exemption? I'll build the model out, bring it back for consideration, and it will mysteriously match exactly what we need to close the landfill, so we can remove that liability from the worry of the future. So it'll create a pathway for sustaining that closure-post-closure fund, in addition to the money we have in there, so we have a good starting point, because the fees start low and gradually escalate, but it gets us to market. And so once we get to market 22, 23 years from now, we're going to be looking for a future council, a future city manager, a future team, maybe not all of us, but you know, some of those folks, most of us will most likely be in a different place, and give them the opportunity to create the next solution. They'll need to do it before then, obviously, because it will be coming and start bidding those contracts and getting ready for it. But it's preparing for those steps that are inevitable, and the trash fee is one of those. But I felt the most palatable way to handle this was to start very low, gradually escalate to get to the market rate based on what we needed to achieve with closure-post closure. If I can have a delta in there of about $2 to $3 million, based on the pro forma, to allow for a transition couple of years, because the fee is going to jump. So you'd use that money that's in the account to soften the blow of the transition to market and escalate back up to the market rate. So it all works out in favor of the residents. And it respects the balance of the landfills. A lot of folks say this is, hey, the residents paid for the landfill. The residents of a while ago did pay for a landfill, and it was a very great investment. Who would have known? You can't repeat that success today. This land doesn't exist. The timing doesn't exist. But it reflects the timing of it, that past residents did pay for this, future residents will be on the hook for this. And so it's blending that responsibility, so there's not a free rider concept in the middle of it, and it balances who pays for what for the service level. Because I believe, I'm not aware of any other city that I can think of that has free trash service, and it's unsustainable. It just is what it is. So we have to be prepared for the future. And so can we create a pathway to build towards that future slowly but surely, but also respect the fact that we don't want to just say, hey, we need $30 a month from every residential household? That's not right either. We need to slowly build towards this and get everybody ready for it, but it will be a different change. But can we balance it until we get there? And how do we want to balance it? I will give that to council, but I wanted to give you solutions to consider, but I couldn't ignore the one-day-a-week on the West Side versus the rest of the city, because that is a different service level. So it should be accounted for differently, in my opinion. I'll give credit to Richard. He was the one that was brainstorming with this one, and he goes, wait, there are one-day-a-weeks. It probably should be a different, that's a great idea. Let me see what I can do. And so that's why you see that, not on my slides, because I didn't want to change everything the day before the meeting. But to give you all just, if we were to continue this discussion, are you, how are you comfortable with that discussion? How are you comfortable talking to your residents about it? That's what I really want to make sure we're ready to do. So.
All right. You gave me my room rental stuff. On the seniors, I would like to go back to that for the rec fees. Can we be more consistent for the seniors on fees of, like, like you're saying, for the trash fee, 50%? Can we say, okay? Because I guess I'm, my question on them is, why only the walking, you know, the walking path and basketball court? I get why the kids shouldn't be on the other equipment, that there's a liability with that.
Correct.
And I understand that the senior center, the Branch Connection, has a small weight room, and they're going to be going through changes, but it's still not the same.
Okay.
So I guess that's kind of for me, like, well, I mean, you know, just let them have it all. I mean, if you're going to raise the rate, just allow them to have access to, and I guess I don't even know how you monitor that, but.
That would be a challenge as well. I feel like Rachel may have stood up and has something to add on this one.
You can ask a specific question?
Well, I just don't understand why, I mean, if you can't monitor it, whether they get on the equipment or not, because we're only giving them access to the walking track and the basketball court. I mean, why not just give them access to all of it? Why don't you just say?
So right, the general topic, the best-case scenario would be to increase our bottom line, right? That would be the best-case scenario. In doing this, we're looking at it right now, we're currently paying $25, $40. It would be jumping up to hundreds of dollars. So what we did initially, when we were going through this concept, was look at, okay, here's our user base, how many, what is our percentage base? And we looked at the U and the resident, because those are the ones that we do want to make sure to be a topic, right? Everyone here is 18 to 50, not 30, for the fitness fee. And for those who work at, like, work out at the Branch Connection, don't want to work out at the rec center. The ones who work out at the rec center don't want to work out at the Branch Connection. So what we came down to is essentially have some 900 seniors at the rec center. Of those seniors, 342 already pay for the fitness membership, and 104 are the basic membership. Of that, of the 900, we have 350 on our silver membership. So the silver programs are Silver Sneakers, Silver Fit, which is 100% free to them. Now, we get a little kickback per scan, but it's fairly minimal. So essentially, forty percent of our seniors are already getting a free membership. And that's if they do use upstairs, downstairs. Now, our staff is incredible, and they generally know who's a basic membership versus the rec center, but not perfect, so some of it is an honor system. Best-case scenario, yes, we would. But at that point, we would be increasing those senior fees drastically versus what they're paying now. So I can tell you all about.
Okay. And I had questions for Firehouse, but I'll save those for the first as well.
And the fees will all come back to council on Appendix A when we adopt the budget. But I'd like to, as we get questions, proactively steer into those. Usually, those are moved pretty quick when we get to September. So if y'all have more questions on fees, we can definitely dive more into those if you want to have more of a dialogue. And again, council sets the fees. These are just recommendations.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start at the police and fire slide.
Are we talking about the pay rate?
Yes, the pay rates. There we go. Thank you. I seem to recall there being a reason for the anomaly in the corporal position. And I'd just like to hear that explanation again, why that one, if we consider a six percent, you know, distance, it's eight and a half percent above the, you know, the market pay versus the other positions. And what would be the dollar amount associated with that particular role?
So I'll have staff correct me on this one if I recall it incorrectly. My understanding is the corporals a legacy alignment in our org structure. Chief McCoy is looking to move past that alignment and basically eliminate that classification. That will create more of a separation between the officer and sergeant, because there's some compression issues in there with the corporal. The corporal band doesn't exist in all of our comp analysis, so it's skewed. It doesn't have the same number of data points as the other. But the goal is, I believe, to move the corporals to, I believe, is it sergeant? Is that correct? So move to sergeant. So it eliminates that band and then creates the separation we're looking for in the officer and sergeant bands, but also makes the pay rates go back into balance so we don't have this one group that's out of alignment, because it just doesn't exist in all the different comp analysis. So we didn't want to say something before it's done. So when this was originally presented, that was an idea that was being matured. But we're farther down the road now, and that's something that looks like is going to happen. We did this in the fire department as well, as we got rid of lieutenants and went to captains. So it's cleaning up the org chart to match how we're actually aligned and the responsibilities. Also makes the comp analysis much cleaner.
Okay. Yeah, very good. I thought I recalled there being something about that particular role and there not being an impact, albeit this slide shows there's a significant impact there. Okay. The dependent care slide. So just a couple of comments on this. I heard, Yoko, you were talking about, this is a common practice, you know, with other cities to offer dependent care account. I think we also need to consider that our employees aren't just looking at other municipalities for employment. They may be looking at corporations. And dependent care flexible spending account is a very common benefit offered, you know, in corporate America. I don't know what the prevalence is for matches, but, you know, for those of our employees that have daycare expenses, a thousand dollars match, albeit generous, is not, you know, that's going to help with the expense, but the expense of full-time daycares is quite a bit higher. So I think this is a really good thing for our city. And I would hope or expect that all of our employees that have child daycare expenses would take advantage of that. One question on this one. Yoko, who's our, who's the administrator of this plan?
We are currently talking with HSA Bank, because HSA Bank is working, they manage our HSA. So that's where we got these quotes from. And so we will start working with them. We confirmed from our last meeting, and then after this meeting. But we've already started that connection, and this month we'll start working on the plan to have possibly that January start date.
Okay. And they'll be consulting us on the communication education plan around implementing the plan as well?
Absolutely.
Okay. Very good. Trash service. I think it's, it's very smart for our city to be thinking this far ahead in dealing with the impending closure needs or decommissioning needs of our landfill. I think the way that we're approaching this, you know, from the start, is a very reasonable approach. You know, a small nominal fee for trash service that compared to many other cities has been, you know, a huge plus for residents for a long time. You know, five bucks a month for some is nothing, and for others, you know, may be material. But I certainly think that it's reasonable and logical to consider the reduced service for those on the West Side and to, you know, again, consider our seniors. You know, for the reasons Ben stated, they probably use or produce less trash than many other residents. Many of them that lived here years ago already paid for the landfill. So it just kind of makes sense that they would be given some consideration in this slide. The consolidated neighborhood program? Question on the ninety thousand dollars for the Oak Brook. I don't know, is Pete still in the room?
He is not. He had to leave.
Okay. So Mayor Ben, if this is more of a legal question, we can take this separately. But, you know, we've had this discussion a number of times before, and the question has come up, well, what other neighborhoods? Is it possible where the city years ago made agreements with developers for specific arrangements that if we allocate money to this arrangement, are we setting ourselves up for precedence for it?
On this one?
Not that I'm...
Oh, go ahead.
Not that I'm entirely against the idea, but I want to make sure that we're looking at these other exposures, because I wouldn't want to, you know, set some kind of precedence. It's going to then spur other conversations and just dig us a deeper hole here.
Yeah, I am very confident, based on the unique situation of their water meter situation and service levels, that this one is the only one that's this unique. Because I can look at private streets, I can look at private alleys, I can see private infrastructure. This is the only one I've ever seen that's set up this way with shared water meters. And it's a difficult one to unravel, but this would help also with some of the city programs and services that we offer, because a lot of them are tied to notifications in the water bill, or even when we did the rebates and discounts. This is one that's been particularly challenging for us. But if I look at all the other private neighborhoods with private amenities and infrastructure, this is the only one that has this kind of unique alignment with the shared meters that are paid out of HOA. It's a very unique alignment, and this is one they specifically said they would like our help with. So we've tried to figure out, what would that assumed cost be? We felt comfortable saying that half would be ninety thousand to help us get, make meaningful change there. Now, again, until it goes out for bid and we get stuff back, it could change. But we felt very comfortable with our public works team saying ninety thousand dollars would be a good step forward. I don't have any concerns with precedent, because there is nothing like this in Farmers Branch anywhere else. If it was a median, absolutely. If it was a street, absolutely, because we do have private streets and private medians in Farmers Branch, that's a different conversation, because they exist in multiple places with different agreements that got us to that relationship. This one is very old, a very old agreement, and it's one that, this is just a very unique feature of it that creates just inequity that we're trying to right if we can. It's also low-hanging fruit when you're looking at the millions of dollars of infrastructure that they do maintain, that they would love for the city to have, but there's really not a pathway forward with that one. So this one is, if we were to partner with, they still have to agree to partner with us, which is, we're not paying for it all. We'll pay for half, basically following the guidelines of the Neighborhood Partnership Program as a roadmap to find success with this one. But talking to Ryan, talking to other folks, talking to the Oak Brook HOA, we've had several, several meetings with them to discuss this in depth and just the future. We feel like this helps move that forward a little bit. But again, I'm not worried about any type of precedent with this one example. That's why I didn't put anything in here on this would be overlapping to those other areas that have private infrastructure.
Okay. And the city would not be involved in any contracting or labor regarding the water meter replacements? It's just simply, we would contribute to that HOA for the purpose of covering some of the costs of that benefit, right?
Labor typically no, but we would be involved in the procurement, because it is taxpayer dollars. So we're going to make sure it's done right, because they're not professional staff, and that's where our staff would be involved. And that's the value of our team, is we would make sure this is done right. Because the worst thing we could do is have them get their piece together and have our match, and then spend it and not get the project done correctly. So the staff is very involved on that side of the equation to make sure it's done effectively, because that's what our staff does, and that's the expertise they have. They don't have engineers, we do. So we would make sure it's successful.
So there's time and resource cost, then in addition to the ninety thousand or the half, there's also the expending of staff resources?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Rec center fees. I kind of feel like the seniors should just simply have all access, you know, for what they're paying. I don't see them, you know, causing a lot of additional traffic or pressure on the rec center equipment. So I just think for the cost, they should be given all access. And then for non-resident fees, for both rec center and room rental rates, I think it's important to continue to emphasize that our facilities in Farmers Branch are intended for use, designed for use by Farmers Branch residents. I would suggest that all non-resident fees just categorically be two times what residents might pay. Just keep that formula simple, but making the message clear there.
Okay.
Richard?
Yes?
Can I get clarification, Mike, Mr. and Deputy City Manager? When you say senior fees, so the federally recognized age is sixty-two. Now, we allow seniors into the rec center, fifty. We really don't have many fifty-year-olds there, to be honest with you. And that was kind of a legacy alignment long, long ago that should probably be reassessed. We've looked at that, and there's maybe like ten that are there under the age of sixty-two-ish. So when I say that, it's just, we have a lot of fifty-year-olds that still work that probably don't need the subsidy of just kind of all access for almost nothing per year. So that's just one little twist I want to clarify before we adjust fees, is are we going by fifty years old or sixty-two? Because fifty, fifty to sixty-one will impact revenue and kind of counteract what we're trying to do with the fees there. But if we go sixty-two and above, that makes perfect sense. Those people aren't high users, but I sure hope, I'm only seven years from fifty. I sure hope I'm still working out at that age, so I will be a high user. So anyway, just food for thought for you all before we make that distinction.
Yeah, definitely, when I think of, when I think of senior in terms of, you know, using our rec center. So I'm not thinking with the same age band as what's permitted at the Branch Connection. I'm thinking of an older crowd, sixty-two and up. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, definitely. And I don't necessarily understand entirely the Silver Sneakers program and how it's impacted. I'm just generally saying, it doesn't, to me, make sense to limit access to seniors at the rec center for this price.
So Councilman Jackson, Rachel Royale, Director of Precious Recreation, let me give you a little bit more information. So right now, we currently have two hundred and eighty-eight fifty-to-sixty-five-year-olds. If those members were reduced to a senior membership, we would lose approximately forty thousand in annual revenue. As far as the Silver Sneakers, Renew Active, Silver and Fit, those are all programs through the individual's insurance. So they pay a premium, a premium, or whatever that fee is included, and then we get paid on a per-scan basis. So they get a free membership outside of us. They don't pay us. They pay their insurance company. It's included with their premiums, and then we get paid on the backend per-scan.
Good. We get paid more.
Correct, correct. So we, Mayor made a good point. We get paid more per-scan out of the silver memberships than we do if they were just a regular senior membership.
Okay. Make sure I'm checking all my questions here. Yep, that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm on. I also had the question about the media specialist for the police, so thank you for the explanation there. Let's see. On the fees for trash service, probably to Shane, do we know, on the thirty-two-point-six million to close it, how good do you feel about that, looking that far into the future?
Oh, sorry. We went through the expansion process, like, how big can we build it? And we built something, that's one of my concerns. Given that Texas and our patrol aren't as strong as other places in the country, and there's plenty of land, you know, one thing that concerns me, we're just starting to... I wouldn't want to tell which one we're... Liner systems are still new. We're getting to the point now where probably going to start hitting the end of the age of some of the liners that can start deteriorating. And that's what we're insured for in the light of business businesses. Travelizing to the last, the new liner system. That would be the link and change our I C out there. Also, we find out all these liners are starting to rupture, and we're getting leaks in the groundwater. That'll pack a number really. So all those things that tend to have a going, I think it's a pretty good number.
Well, where I was going was, five dollars a month for five years seems very reasonable to me. You could even start it at five dollars and then increase it a dollar a year, and that would bring in a little bit more.
And that's what I was looking for with council on this one, is there appetite to start this conversation? Start low, give a discount for seniors, consider the West Side's different service level for trash frequency pickup, and then slowly build towards the end result.
Keep in mind, we're six years behind on this, because I brought this up after I first got on council.
I mean, I'd be fine with, I don't know if it's too much difficulty to change it every year by a dollar, but that would give us not a huge amount more, but it would bring in more money quicker.
I would build in an escalator, because what I wouldn't want to do is put your future councils in the position of having to change the fee. So I'd build, y'all could always modify it, but that way you don't have to come back before, you know, the cameras, public hearings, or whatever it is, and start changing things. It would allow it to, you could always adjust it, but it would adjust on its own based on the pro forma, starting low, and then whether it's five dollars to start, then most to six. I try not to increase fees every year. I try and give it little bricks, like maybe it's the same fee for a couple of years. Then it gradually moves up. And what it really focuses on is getting to that final number, because that's when you start to see the impact. You know, the first-year budgetary impact is not a lot, but when you start getting those end years, when it's at twenty-five dollars, you start seeing millions come on the rolls, which helps offset.
Gotcha.
But it's also the timing of when the landfill closes versus when it doesn't. It's speculative. We have a good estimate, but that estimate moves every year. So it's a good conversation to have. It is smart to escalate and to get there sooner than later.
Let's see. On rec center fees, I completely agree with Richard that non-residents should be two times, in my opinion, all of the resident fees. I mean, given the fact that it's, we're as busy as we are, that seems pretty reasonable. And I'll save Firehouse for August also.
If we could go back to dependent care for a moment. And, Yoko, this question harkens back to, I guess, amid May, when you presented to us. We talked about, you surveyed, I believe, twenty-four cities, and you got seventeen replies. And at that time, there were no other matches? And so you made a statement now that there's a lot of our neighboring cities in the area, we'll go that way, do have a match? So could we clarify that distinction?
Yes, let me clarify that. So our, our comparable cities offer dependent care FSA accounts, but none of them offer a match. So Farmers Branch will be the city who offers a match and a dependent care FSA. They just offer it for them to go ahead and put up to the max of 5,000 if they wanted to. But they don't have matches with that.
And so based on that, is it then possible for our employees to put in up to 5,000 under this particular plan? And our match would only be capped at 1,000, is that correct?
Exactly. So we will do a one-for-one match. So if somebody puts in 1,000, they will get the 1,000. And if they wanted to fill up that cap, that max, they can continue to do that. Which I would say from my experience, I don't have the data to back it up, but from our experience, when people do invest in that FSA, dependent care, they tend to max it out. Because just like Councilmember Jackson said, exactly. And, and the expense of childcare is, is really outrageous right now, so.
Correct, I understand. All right, thank you for the clarity. I think it's very important that we talk about that while we currently do not offer the plan at all.
Right.
And we're talking about offering the plan with a match.
Yes.
And nobody, well, not nobody, very few, if any, offer a match. And so I think that differentiates ourselves as a potential landing place for employees looking at, if there is a slight differential. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I did want to clarify on that $5,000 match, if you are fi, if you're married and filed jointly, then you would do a 25-25 cap.
Okay.
Just.
It's a $5,000 total per family. Thank you for that. Trash fees. Shane, this is probably for you. How much does the landfill generate in fees for the city?
What we budgeted this year?
That's fine. And maybe while they're looking that up, Ben, I'll ask the question. We had previously in the prior two years, put a billion dollars into the post-closure account. Is that still in your budget to do that?
Correct, it's actually supposed to jump to two, which starts to create, that's a lot of money moving when I have other expenditures we're trying to solve. So at the end of the year, we talked about prefunding another element. So end of year, my goal was to move a million proactively into it and then budget a million next year. I still think that's the move regardless of the fee structure because I want to get a strong baseline established. Because he's going to have expenses coming to maintain the landfill, so yes.
And that's why I'm asking, these are important things that we're not, not moving away from that philosophy as you talked about, to make sure that we have that. So you were.
6.8 is what we have budgeted for this year.
6.8 as in income. So I'll just give you Dave Merritt's understanding of this. It seems that if we have someone else paying 6.8 million to use our services, we'd want to make sure that we take advantage of that to its fullest extent before we start asking our residents to pay some of those funds as well. So I know there's a balance and it comes out of a bigger pool, but philosophy in seemingly says that we should make sure that we take full advantage of that. And so to your point of moving monies around, the transfers as Tammy talked about before, making sure that that, we do the most on that side of the equation upfront, knowing that we'll have this. Because it's 6.5 this year, we expect it probably to be that or more going forward. So therefore, while we're generating money from this particular asset, it makes sense that the asset helps fund its own closure.
Correct, and you could argue that it's already done that because it's been sustaining the landfill as it is. We've already had different infrastructure.
We spent money, don't get me wrong, we've spent plenty of money.
And that's.
And there's probably more to spend and we've already heard that. And then there's that, you know, inevitable, let's hope not, we have a bad situation as well. So we're trying to talk about all of those facets. And so I want to make sure that we have this understanding that there are many things at play.
Correct.
And not just, okay, we know 23 years from now, we need to close this and we'll start collecting $5. But I want to make sure that the philosophy is balanced, that we're trying to take as much from the revenue portion of those folks that are using a landfill to pay for the post-closure. Not all of it, don't get me wrong, because there are other things that that money funds, I get that.
And that's the, the line at the bottom that I copied from Shane's presentation, because a lot of these slides look familiar, right? Like I've seen this before, is the total trash service bill we're going to get versus the revenue that'll be generated. So even at $5, you could argue that's paying for trash service. It's a very subsidized.
I agree.
Relationship, you go in the market that's 23 to 30.
It's not black and white, and that's the key. We pay the trash service, we pay a fee for that that comes out of the other money. So there are a lot of moving parts here.
Correct, and that's what I'm trying to show is the balance and the philosophy and the relationship, which is $5 does not pay for trash service. $10 does not pay for trash service. When we start getting to the market rates, 23, 30, wherever you want to be, we'll say 30 on the high end, you see the subsidy amount that the general fund, because that revenue does go, it's general fund, it's not restricted. And so what it is, is the city itself is paying for free trash service. So it's not free, it's at 64.5 million. I show what we're going to generate by this mechanism, it's 32.6. So even over the journey of this relationship, there's a heavily subsidized structure in place that heavily favors today's residents and slowly moves it forward to market for the future baseline. And so that's what I was trying to say, it is, is $5 won't pay for it, but it's getting us prepared for the future, which is, it's coming one day. I don't ever want to start a council meeting 20 years from now, 22 years from now, saying, hey, I need you to add a $30 or $50 per month fee to the books. Because that's a long day.
Or we need $32 million to close this, this year.
Correct, so we're on the right path.
All right, I'm, I'm totally on board and Shane's, Shane's laughing, but we all know that we're needing to get there. But I want to make sure from a philosophical perspective, that we're going to squeeze as much as we can out of those funds that are being generated by the landfill itself.
Correct, there's an exponential amount of need in other, in the city as a whole. So the infrastructure across the board and that revenue can be used for any needs that the city has, including infrastructure needs, fleet, fixed assets. So it's a, it's a balancing game, but the way I look at it is, yes, it's going to be very careful in how we describe this if it does move forward, but it's not a true fee, it's a very heavily subsidized fee. And even then, you can see over the lifespan of the landfill, why we're looking at it through this lens is, we're not asking anybody to pay for trash service, we're getting ready for those fees as they come, but we are using those funds to help cover the assets that's generating the revenue that is subsidizing those expenses.
We all know that the residents will look around and say, now you're going to ask me to pay more. You're, we're on one hand trying to give you a tax relief. One might see this as a tax, if you will. It's not necessarily a tax, it's a fee for service, I totally understand that. But that at the end game, we're talking about what's the differential out of Dave Merritt's pocket or Dave Merritt's family's pocket. And there is going to be an impact here.
Absolutely, and that's why it's fortuitous, we have these discussions, the state's also having some discussions. So then that result will be, I look at responsibility to the residents, current and the future and the past residents that put, were in this position. Somebody gave me analogy once about kicking the can down the road and you could almost argue this is one of those elements. Eventually the can gets filled with cement and you can't kick it anymore. And so that's kind of, well, it's been a discussion before and so bringing it back for consideration. It feels like after hearing all of your opinions, y'all are okay with starting the conversation at a low amount, letting it escalate, consider our seniors, consider the West Side. But be very careful how we discuss it in a way that makes sure we show what's actually happening here and those interactions. And again, separating the different conversations into different buckets. Because you're right, it could be seen as, well, the fees are going up, this is paying for what we pay for something. It's, it turns into a pass-through in the end and so we want to be ready for that pass-through cost when it's balanced.
All right, very good. Shane, thank you, appreciate the research. See, on the, on the neighborhood partnership program, I think we've had discussions already from other questions related to the Oak Brook. It's obviously sitting in my district. We've worked very closely with them, with the homeowners association. Part of this number comes from some mathematics on what they contribute into the tax base as well. And so this number is still palatable. It will relieve a particular problem that they have that is, Ben's already stated, is significantly different from anywhere else in the community as a whole. And we can't rectify all the problems that they have there because we do end up with some precedents that might occur. But I think for this, I hope the rest of my peers will be amenable to incorporating that element into this neighborhood program. I'll just need to, I'll say that openly to everyone. The last, the last question I have is on fees. Ben, you and I had a conversation and it's been bantered around. I think the idea of clarifying the senior age will be a great differential to the issue that we brought up before, where there seems to be a different cost structure for the branch connection than the rec center. And then would it be advantageous? And we, you know, played some hypothetical use cases on, you know, would it be more prudent to be a member of the branch connection and use the rec center? And all of that, I think clarifying the age at the rec center at 62, because it'll allow the facility to incorporate the senior, the Silver Sneaker programs would clarify much of that. So I'm comfortable with the fee structure that's proposed. I know some of my peers want to see more for the non-residents. The one caution I might have is, we don't know how much that might impact revenue raising the rate so significantly. So that's just, I'll throw that out there onto the table. But those are all the questions. I'll save my Firehouse Theater comments for the time they present. Other than that, I think, oh, I will say once again, I hope we can address the social services fees and agree to what MetroCrest is, is saw.
Yes.
Can I ask one more question?
You may.
On the dependent care FSA, I have no idea if this is doable or even legal. But would it be possible to make the match a lower number, but make it per dependent? Because if your family has one child, my family has three children and they're all in daycare, wouldn't it be a little fairer to be? Does anybody?
Yoko Matsumoto, Director of Human Resources, I have my brain going.
In other words, in, in the same way that we were talking about senior citizens not producing as much trash, our older folks, you know, and we're giving them a. Just, just thought I'd throw it out there.
It would definitely add a layer of complexity because the question is making my brain. I don't think there would be any legal, I think managing that to be like, employee has two dependents, making sure they're under the age of 13, and you have these, so it would be the management piece of, and, and what's coming to my mind initially, I don't think that we say, like if, when I personally used dependent care FSA, I had, I have twins. And in my mind, I'm just like, I'm maxing out on 5,000 because I know I'm going to use it. So I don't have an answer for you, I would need to do more research, I don't want to give you wrong information.
No, I wasn't.
But you have added a, a layer to my onion, but I'm going to go back.
It feels like, you know, if.
Yeah, no, interesting question. That question tends to come out more so on, on, on your insurance, like your premiums and, and the cost shares there. I don't think it would be an issue legally, but I just, I'm just not sure by adding that extra layer of, of staff of what we're going to manage, it would impact, I, I think most parents will just max it out. Even if they have four kids or they have one child, they're going to use it. But I will, I'm not going to say no, I will research it for you and try to get you a better answer.
I didn't think about that. So there's a max and the max is going to be reached by a smaller number from the family?
Right.
Plus what's coming from, you can't go over the max.
Yeah, the max is a $5,000 max and it's not per dependent, it's just a max. So if I had one child, but I had two, I knew I was going to use that max. Because again, if I don't use it, I would, I would lose the money. And so with childcare, most people know they're going to use it within the first few months or what have you.
Even with one child.
Even with one or two children.
Yeah, I didn't think about that, okay.
Yeah.
Glad I asked.
So did it, do I need to do research for you? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Unless somebody here feels strongly, we should.
Yeah, no, I think if it were a larger amount where there was a max of like 10,000, that's a different, but 5,000 is.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking about that angle on it.
All right, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Okay. Ben, so we haven't addressed contract for services. I know there, there's been discussion regarding requests that have been made. And I think each of us have our own numbers and figures in mind. Is that something that you need direction now?
No, out of respect for time, what I will do is on the next agenda, I did seem to have pretty good direction on all the amounts except for MetroCrest Services. I will pull MetroCrest Services to the regular agenda for discussion on the next council meeting. The arrest will be on consent, but can be pulled if there's any concerns or questions on those amounts.
Well, let me ask before you do that. Other than MetroCrest Services, item one, does anybody have any comments regarding the other items?
Yes.
Yes, up there.
And yes.
Okay.
Those items.
I'll make some of those check marks disappear then, so it sounds like we want to discuss the.
So here's what I would suggest this week in our one-on-ones, that you have those discussions so we can be prepared at our next conversation.
Perfect, since these all have contracts attached to them at this point in time and the agenda will be publishing on Wednesday, what I'll do is turn this back into a study session for a direction. Then we'll actually bring the contracts back at a future one because amending five contracts as it would be all at once can get messy and I don't want to mix anything up or have any mistakes. So to continue that discussion, I will bring this slide back as a study session item through Juaria. We'll look for direction, including our one-on-ones, but that way we can have it properly ready. I won't have the ability to get the contracts updated with the published agenda already in place. So that's where I'm going to pause on that piece.
Yeah.
And I'll be, I'll be clear on, like the one with the question mark, MetroCrest Services, like I think that's fine to put on study session. The only one I had a question about was the MetroCrest Chamber, just because there's been a sudden change.
There has been a change, yes.
So, and one of the, one of the reasons they explained that they've had very, that they had a difficult time answering some of my questions, was because they've had a bumpy road to get fully staffed. And now that they're fully staffed, they were good to go. And then boom, this happens where the CEO is gone and so now I'm concerned again. So those are the only two for me.
My, one quick response on that would be is it's performance-based, so I don't have concerns. If they don't deliver, they don't get paid. So that's the benefit of those contracts.
Well, while they may not have been, while they may, while it may be a performance-based contract, the way that they were receiving their funds was a bit questionable.
Okay.
And I know I went through this with a pretty fine-tooth comb and I reduced that 370 number by about $41,000. And that doesn't mean everybody received a cut, some, some things were increased, some, some were trimmed back a little bit. So I have some adjustments that I'd like to discuss.
Okay, absolutely.
So, okay.
We'll prepare, but for time today, I'll make sure to be ready for those for the one-on-ones. And then during the next council meeting during study sessions, we have one more element to the budget, which is Squire Park, which we need direction on. So I'm going to do as my staff that's not parks and not city managers' office, not finance. Please go forth to the next part of the meeting. Allison will take the lead and we'll catch up with you all shortly.
I was trying to write something and then I tried to write an N and it turned out to be an M. That's what happens when I wake up early. I didn't even write it. It was supposed to be an N, and anyways, that's why I stopped.
I never would have suspected that we would be supporting an initiative to help an HOA. They have their own unique issues that they're experiencing. And I tried to push forward and last year got shut down immediately. So, I'm surprised that now we're supporting a different initiative. So, I'm surprised that now we're supporting a different motion. So if that is the direction that I'm going, then I wanted to visit with you about it, get your sentiments on it before I brought it up.
I couldn't write that all here. My, I don't know why, like, my handwriting has been sloppy. Normally it's... I don't understand. Maybe I just don't write that often, that I don't have...
Okay, y'all can help all each other out.
Right, ladies and gentlemen.
Squire.
Let's, let's, how long do you think we need for Squire Park?
It will depend on your discussion. I will be very brief.
I give you five minutes.
Mike Mashburn, Deputy City Manager, if there's not a more discouraging thing when you get up to present, it's when everybody leaves the room. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So I'm here to talk about Squire Park. This is a conversation we started many years ago. So Mayor Lynn and Councilman Merritt, you were here for that, and you remember that. For those that weren't here for the full five-year journey on how this transpired, I'll take you down a walk through memory lane real fast, very quick. So five years ago, I came on, and one of my first tasks was to go through and take the council members at that time through a field trip, a tour for a dog park site. And one of the sites we stopped at was Squire Park. And I remember driving by there, and we were just about to install new playground equipment that looks about the same as the old playground equipment. And I remember it was the saddest thing I've ever seen. I internally called it Brussels Sprout Park. Here's why. Some people like Brussels sprouts, kids don't, most kids don't. So the some people that like it are the basketball players, the kids, they stay away. I'll tell you, I'll tell you why in a second, how we fix that. So we went through and we did an inventory of all of our parks, and we determined the usage. And we were hoping there was a correlation between the kids in the area, perhaps proximity to where they live, all of that stuff. Turns out that wasn't the case. The correlation happened when we made something that gave people a purpose in the sense to be there, and also if there were tournaments in town or whatever. But it was kind of hard to tie something in. And so over the years, we did a Parks Master Plan, and we identified areas in the city that we wanted to systematically improve and bring our residents back into the community. I think that's what's special about Farmers Branch is we kind of get out there and we create that sense of community, whereas other communities kind of stay indoors and play video games, all that stuff. So we implemented Mallon Park. At one point, we saw huge increased usage. The dog park that we implemented as well, same thing. Montgomery Park now, the Turf at Orang Good, the rec center, and now Hoya coming online. When we did our Parks Master Plan in 2019, Squire Park was on there for renovation 2026. Carrie Phillips and I, around that same time, right about 2020, when we finished that, we went to Farmers Branch Night Out. And Maria, Rachel, all of you in here, you've probably been there. We've been to several parties. The biggest and best party I have ever been to in my five years was at Squire Park. And that's because a resident, it was so fun, yeah. A resident came out there, Loretta Almanza, and orchestrated this huge gathering and gave people a reason to be there. And Carrie, you remember this, we saw so many kids that day, and as we exited, I go, we got to move this park up. We both came through, and so we got to move that park up. So that's when we started developing a design to present to council at the time to say, hey, what could this be? Now, this kind of didn't make it through because we're in the middle of so many other projects at the time, so I want to thank Councilwoman Bennett Burton and also Councilman Roman for bringing this up during our one-on-ones. They said, what can we do for these residents right here? And so I'm going to walk you through a little bit of the history on how we, we sort of got here. I'm going to give you some ideas to think about, and then it will be up to you how long this conversation lasts. So the current state, Brussels Sprout Park, Squire Park right here, does this look fun if you're a kid? And that's kind of newish equipment, like five years old. That's, that's, that's not fun at all. It's very sad. But that's what it looks like today. So the active use there is the basketball court. And so that's not something I would ever probably design, if you've seen the stuff that we've done over the years. So I'll show you what we did kind of design. It's a very awkward piece of land here. It's, it's, the parts we own are highlighted right there. There's a house, it's kind of on a double lot to the west there that would be ideal to have. We have engaged in conversations on there. It's essentially not for sale when you look at the price. At the point, we, we kind of tried to negotiate, it was worth about three hundred and fifty thousand, they wanted a million dollars. So I said, well, we can design something pretty sweet without that piece of land. So in essence, what you have here, you have a sport court, very aesthetically pleasing basketball court, moved more towards the kind of side of the road there. You have a nice custom-made playground structure in the middle and a splash pad, which has been a huge, huge resident ask for quite some time. It also had, you're not going to see in the pictures, but the sort of CG area, it was these kind of lighted sort of swings, it was really, really pretty sweet. But it's missing parking. If you've ever been down Squire, that road is thin. You got a car or two on the road, it's, it's tough. So we do need parking on there. And so these were some of the visuals that it sort of looked like and said, hey, this is cool. And you're going to ask me, Mike, I want that, can we make that happen? No, we can't, unless you got three million dollars, we can't make that happen today. So as Ben and I and Juari were sort of baking the budget, when we talked about the DART ILA that we addressed earlier, there's maybe an opportunity to carve out about 1.8 million to devote to this park. And so we kind of started there. We went back to the architects and we said, okay, what can we do for 1.8 million? We said, hey, here's some challenges. The adjacent parking, or the adjacent property, we want it, we can't have it. The parking, how do we add that to a thin piece of lot? And of course, we have less funding than we'd hoped for to get that done. So they came back, you have an updated design. To me, this doesn't get me excited. You still have the sport court, very subdued, a splash pad, which would be cool, pavilion, which is labeled by D, and then of course, parking, which is probably necessary if you bring a splash pad. For a parent of a five-year-old right now, I frequent parks regularly, especially splash pads, I will tell you, if you have a playground and a splash pad, playground seldom used, probably not necessary right now. Everybody's at the splash pad if the weather's halfway decent. But there are upwards of ten, fifteen, twenty kids at any given time, so on that road, that, that parking is probably necessary. I do believe with the history that we've had here with the team, we could probably take the same funds for this park, reconfigure certain things, make it look a heck of a lot better than this for that same budget if we wanted to. However, we have spent a lot of money on parks lately, and so I know that's a concern of residents. And Ben, in his presentation, dropped the bomb, we need 400 million dollars for infrastructure. When you think about that, how do you justify a park? Well, I, I could stand up here and make cases on both sides of the fence, so that's what you all have the wonderful task of deliberating, is what's necessary. When we create these magical spaces in Farmers Branch, and I think we've got kind of a good thing going with what we've built, it brings people outside, it gets to know the, the community members, and it deters some of that nefarious activity we don't want in Farmers Branch, typically don't have. So what about a modified approach? We could do something scaled down where our primary focus is that splash pad. We don't worry about the custom-made play structure, because right down the road, we're going to have a pretty cool one. And parking, we get people off of that road, because I hate going down that, trying to sort of navigate, so I think that's a necessary thing. And it could be phased in. We could, I think basketball is one of the huge things. We take that away, we're going to be in big trouble. So that's not a huge ask, and landscaping, of course, we can do as well. Now, these two will be a little more costly in probably many other cities. The beauty of it is I got Carrie and his crew over there, and once they're freed up, not now, but once they're freed up, they can save us a lot of money with helping with some of that stuff, because they are very talented. So how to make it a reality? We talked about the DART ILA funds. Currently, we carved out about 1.8 million. Whether that's desirable or palatable, that's for you all to decide. If we delay this closer to 2024, 2025, allocate the funds now, do it then, we can use in-house labor. Unfortunately, I think they're busy beyond belief at this point, so they can't take another project on, so we'd have to contract out everything if we did it that way. And then we can do a phased approach. If you want to focus on that primary element, the splash pad that everybody wants, we can do that, and then add the other elements later and go way less than that 1.8 million dollars. So I know what you're going to ask next, especially Councilman Jackson, what are the action steps? How do we engage the residents, right? So I'm going to look for council direction now and a funding amount, which everybody's kind of comfortable with. Our team will kind of go back to the drawing board, reconfigure a few things. We'd gather the community in that area specifically, and we'd knock on a lot of doors and get some folks out there and kind of present them with some ideas. We formulate the revised plan and then bring that back to you for approval. So that'll take several months to do. But first things first, we need to determine if this is something we want in the somewhat near future and the dollar amount, and then we'll get started from there. After that, questions?
Mike, you made the comment that we could phase approach, doing it in-house, we could do it for less than 1.8?
Mm-hmm. And it depends on the level. So if you're asking that first one with all the lights and custom, we can't do that. But if you're saying, can you do a pretty sweet splash pad and parking for, for less than that? Yes, we can do that.
I'm on board with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm on board with that. We've got to bring that area up, and I think that that, to enhance that, this would go a long way. But phasing it in is a much simpler approach.
Ready for me?
We're ready.
Okay. I, I, I think this is something that's extremely needed. When I went and walked around the neighborhood and solicited votes, one of the things that became very clear to me was that people feel that that area had been lost and forgotten for a very long time in Farmers Branch. They feel like Farmers Branch has progressed very significantly in other areas. They see the west side being built up significantly with its own retail coming, more areas of land that are empty for possible development, they're getting their own park, and then they see the other side of the, of the city where there's east side development. And, and these are not things that, that are, that, that are just made up. These are things that we know is happening and are going on, and for, you know, I don't know what the reason for it was, but there's been a lot of, a lot of people who feel like they're, they're just the lost and forgotten area. And so one of the initiatives that I want to do is I want, I want to bring some freshness, some, I want to liven that area up, and I think creating an environment that's conducive for families to come together and, and play and have family time and have little get-togethers with family members, I think that creates an environment that's conducive to not only our critical business outcomes, but also to just liven up that neighborhood and let them know that we care about them just as much as any other residents out there, and we care about progressing that part of the community as well. I'm, I'm certainly happy for, you know, if it's something that we can move forward, or move forward with, even if it's something that's going to take a little bit more time for our, our team to be able to, to take on. So if, if everyone's okay with it, then you should be fine.
Well...
And I'll stop there, but I have more if needed.
So, go on. Oh, I, I'm for it. I, I'm still wrapping my head around what it costs to put in a splash pad and stuff like that. I'm definitely for doing something here. I also always, I didn't, I didn't think the, the stuff that's out there now is that bad. My kids have been on it and enjoyed it and whatnot. And it always, I give pause any, anytime we have something that seems perfectly good and we want to tear it down. I would much rather see a, see something out, a splash pad that could be worked in to the available area if possible, but maybe it's not possible. I haven't, I haven't been out there in several months. But I'm for it overall.
Councilman Jackson? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Generally, I support the idea. I think the current park is tired. It, and I believe, Mike, you and I had talked before, we're going to need to spend some money on existing equipment soon enough anyways, is that correct?
For that park?
Twenty twenty-six?
Like repairs?
Yeah, so, so there's more of a robust update in 2026 coming, that's planned, and that's what we put aside $600,000 a year for replacing and updating current equipment. So that's where that slots in at. Now, it, it's really a philosophical discussion at that point is, because this stuff will last thirty years. If you leave, it'll look terrible. People won't use it, but it, it will maintain its integrity for the most part with some updating for 20, 30 years. Me personally, with, with the way we're trying to go and the way we've analyzed everything at this point, is we try and give each park a personality now, and everything's a little bit different, and it kind of takes on some of the personality of the community. So for this one, for instance, Squire Park, you know, we're using that Farmers Branch Night Out where those families gathered in large spaces and there was a lot of kids there. What I'd love to see is a, a larger pavilion or maybe multiple pavilions where you can have free birthday parties out there, and you have the splash pad, and you're conducive for those large family gatherings. And so that's a tough question, if, if you're saying, is it due for update? Yeah, we can replace the same with the same, and it still doesn't get used. We can replace with what doesn't get used or something a little bit better, and you see people come out. We've got several examples of that now, so...
Right, but we're already accruing for some updates and repairs in the future, so this isn't necessarily new money. We're just, we need to add to what we're currently accruing to take it a, a big step further. So you made a comment about if there's a splash pad and playground equipment, the kids are going to be on the splash pad. I would agree with that in the warmer months, but in the colder months, you know, they're going to want to be on playground equipment. Is there splash pad equipment that is usable year-round? You just don't turn the water on? How does that work?
Yeah, I, I would not advise that, only because with Texas, certain months you can... Sorry, I'm not like talking to the screen. Certain months, you could have freezes, and that could screw everything up if you don't winterize it and turn it off. And so that's the concern.
Right, but is that, is that equipment, because we're not talking about just a pad of concrete with some water in it, there's usually some equipment on there that kids climb or play around in the water as well, right?
Yeah, they typically play in it, so if you look at a lot of the splash pad, they might have that hoop, you know, some of those arc things that splash water or a bucket that drops on you. It's not typically something you climb on generally, unless it's at a water park. Yeah.
Okay, all right. Yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm generally supportive. I think we're thinking smartly here. Maybe, I, I don't, I don't want to give up the playground equipment either, because that's, that's a year-round.
And, and let me give you a solution for that. So if you've been out to Mallon Park, you see the structure that's out there, and I think we probably all agree it's fairly nice, right? So that was something we got a grant for that paid for half of that. I think it was a 35, $40,000 piece of equipment that our crews installed, and so it saved us quite a bit of money. So like I said, if we have some time to do it, we can get creative and make a big impact with, with few dollars. So we can still add that. I would just add better equipment with a strategic way of buying it, if, so to speak. I would really invest the dollars in the splash pad and parking, that's what's going to suck up a lot of it. Landscaping certainly costs money, but our crews can do it if they have time, and that's going to add just so much to that if, if you just brighten it and liven it up, and I think we can, we can do that in a wise way.
Sure. Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
I think one of the things you were looking for is also a dollar amount, right? Will you go back to the question, to the, the list of things that you needed?
Sure. And, let's see. So for this, where I would start, parking is expensive, and putting in splash pads are expensive. And what I want us to also just be mindful of is as we add amenities, increased maintenance comes with that. And so we've added these, you saw on the, the sheet Ben sent you, we didn't add positions to parks and rec as far as the maintenance team's concerned, so they are, they're stretched thin. So that is something next year, I think we just need to be mindful of in the budgets to add a crew there. But if we can start, let's say you just take the 1.8 million and you cut it in half, if everybody's comfortable with that, that's a great starting point to get, to get a good park done.
So that 900,000, if I hear you correctly, that's the splash pad and parking?
I think we, I think we can do a little bit more with that, but let me get some good costs on that first. Yeah.
We'll revisit this conversation once you have a better idea of cost.
Yeah, if you can give me a start, if I can just get a head nod, like, we're good with 900 in the budget, then we can get to work on some of this. Like, I got one thumbs up or kind of a, yeah, mostly.
So if the 900 is in the budget, I also heard you say your team wouldn't be able to deliver until 24, 25?
Yeah, we're going to have to use...
So we're talking about putting it in the budget and then having on-ground by 24, 25 calendar, budget calendar year, right?
Yes, and that's how the ILA funds work, is we can do that project in that particular budget.
So if you're looking for more, would there obviously be an opportunity to seek more money in the '24, '25 budget as well in order to make that happen? Again, we need to be conscientious. Okay, we gave them 900, we didn't see that, but it's 900,000. At this juncture, perhaps more in the next to do more. Because while it's not in my district anymore, it's in Martin's district. You have, you know, you have Dutch Village, which is, I don't know if you have a, a name for Dutch Village, but you have a nice little moniker for Squire. But it too could use some refreshing. So again, it's about a strategy
Yes.
in making sure that these are, you know, refreshed. That could be a neighborhood asset and it's used. It could land a, another turf field, if you will, a pickleball court or two, et cetera.
So.
Those type of opportunities.
Yeah, and that's a great question. So that's why we did do the master plan. And I want just the viewers at home and everybody kind of unfamiliar to realize the talented crew that we have in Parks and Recs. When I took over, it was like, to, to me, it was the land that time forgot. You had a lot of 10, 20, 30-year-old parks that just you replaced with the same and, and needs and things changed. And so we had to take a really thoughtful, strategic view on each thing and come up with all of these projects. Now you're starting to see some of them get done. But it does take time. And so when we did, and I will thank you for bringing this to the forefront at the time, is how much do we need to just replace what we have in the appropriate timeframe? And the amount that we did after we did the analysis and master plan was around $600,000 a year. Now that replaces same with same with a few modifications. But as we start taking this approach and we say, well, we like this, we want a little bit more at this level, then probably more money needs to be added. Now, I will say to the credit of that team, they kind of work some miracles. In other cities, you don't see a dog park like we have for 250,000. And I'm sorry to Carrie and his team, but I pushed you all really, really hard on that one. He made a miracle happen. Or Mallon Park completely resimated for 35. And then certainly Montgomery, I think was about 175 at the end of the day. So I mean, these are really spectacular impacts that we have in the community for, but it takes a toll on the team. And so I want everybody to just be mindful of that as well.
And I think those are certainly, you know, to take advantage of your team doing the work. Where we saving, you had a slide, labor costs. You know, big, a big savings by doing it in-house with the quality and the tenacity the team has. So I think it's really important that we have that strategy of understanding we need to reinvest in our neighborhoods, these parks. I think it's, it is where you want to congregate. We've had the discussion about Farmer's Branch Park and we could, we could go on and on and on about, you know, did we want to spend $6 million there? Did we want to spend $3 million? Unfortunately, what did we do? We spent zero. And so that's disappointing, sitting from this chair, because it's such a big asset. And we don't have that level of space anywhere else. So much could be done there, but we have to have a forward vision. It takes years in order to make it come to fruition. So I'm supportive of this in the million-dollar range, if you will.
Okay.
I know we said 900,000, but I think if you, you know, I like rounder numbers.
Okay, all right.
I'm supportive at a million.
And I'm a very greedy person. Anybody that knows me, I knows that I will advocate tooth and nail for my district. So I support it at the 1.8 million.
I can go 977,543, but not a penny more.
Do I hear 985? Okay, we will get started at a roundish number and then with the opportunity, maybe phase a little bit more in the future, should you all want that in a year.
I think the next, I mean, really the basketball needs to come next. But the parking's got to be there first. It's awful getting down that road.
Yeah, it's, it's the worst. I think once, end of the day, you guys will all be very, very pleased with what we come up with. All right, thank you.
So Mike, what, what, what do you think is the cost for the basketball court, parking lot and the splash pad? Are we talking about a million there or is it more?
Yeah, see, this is, this is the tough part. Y'all want me to commit before getting bid. So I, I will say if we can allow our crews to have some time to work on that, we should be able to get all of that within that number. But I need to get some, some better, better bids for that.
I think those are the three primary things. If we want to phase in the playground equipment and not be fine with that too, I think that's probably generally what we're all kind of thinking, balancing the amenities with the cost.
Great, okay. We will work that direction and we'll start engaging the community here in the next several months.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. So in the interest of time, I'm going to table item D3. We will come back to that at a meeting probably next week.
So what I'll do is I'll set it up two-part. I'll set it up for study session. There will also be an actionable component. Should we come to a consensus quickly? If not, we can always pull the actionable item. But goal is to get that moved forward pretty quick so we can.
Yep. All right.
So we'll meet and talk about this the next time, before our next regular meeting?
The.
11?
The boards and commissions?
Is the 18?
18.
It'll be exactly one week from now on this, on the study session. We'll also have an actionable component just in case. Since we've had this discussion multiple times on creating public pathways, a study session to discuss it. If y'all come to a consensus, Stacy will be ready to execute based on that consensus.
Oh, and that's what these are for.
Yeah, we were prepared for that.
You, you might want to bring your big binder, your board and commission binder also. So just consider that a reminder for that meeting. With that, did you have something else? Okay, I'm, I'm going to adjourn us at 2:27. Thank you, Richard, for taking time to zoom in with us.
Thank you, guys. Y'all enjoy your pickleball.
Okay.